Brainerd Council Meeting tonight on September 15th. And we have people in the audience, which is great. We also have people in the TV audience, which is also great. And so I'm hoping that you came here and you learned something. I know that we certainly will. Or I will, anyway. With that being said, I do have to mention that, and I did mention this once before, is that we would like people to sign in either over in that table or in the stand over there. And then if you have comments that you wish to give for open forum, there's an opportunity to do that on the single sheet. So with that being said, will you please, oh, we need to do roll call. Mayor Wollene?
Here.
Coe?
Here.
Pritchett?
Here.
Matten?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
Sheeler?
Here.
Orkinagin?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anybody have any changes to the consent calendar? Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. The regular agenda. I do have one thing to add to the regular agenda. There was a memo at the last page of the packet in reference to putting together a subcommittee to talk about the SIP bond and lost extension. And so we did not have that on the agenda, and I'd like to add that under new business and put that as 11B. What was the title on that? Committee for SIP and Lost. Okay. Any other changes?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda with that as change, addition.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Consent calendar. Anybody have any changes to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve with the added 11. No, that's not on that one. Motion approved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. I do want to point out in the consent calendar that we do have some openings. We have the one person for the Cable TV Advisory Committee, one for the Transportation Advisory Committee, one for HRA, and two for the EDA. So if you're interested, please contact Administration, or you can go online. The application is also online that you can fill out and send it in. And it is important that we have citizens on our different committees. So with that being said, turn it over to Mr. Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number six is the approval of bills and transfers of funds, personal and finance, and I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Mr. Chair, just one FYI, and it's really more for the public. One very large bill is getting paid $229,966.32 to CNL Contracting. This is the contractor that's up around Garfield School. And we're under obligation to pay that due to scheduling of when they get work done. But Mr. Sheeter is going to give you a report that there is some noted concern as to how the progress, how the work is progressing on that bill. We have to, in other words, we have to pay what we're invoiced, or 95 percent of it, I understand. Correct, Mr. Engineer?
Yes.
And I want to make sure you understand that because that's 229,000 of the $392,000 that were transferred. So that's, or of the bills we're paying, not of what were transferred. So, thank you.
Roll call? Coe?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkinagin?
Yep.
Parks?
Yes.
Okay, we're down to number seven, the sale of electric utility revenue bonds, series 2014A.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the City Council. I'm Paul Steinman with Springstead. What's being distributed here on this visible yellow form is called a bid tabulation. It includes a summary of the bids that we received this morning at 10:30 a.m. in our offices on your electric utility revenue bonds, series 2014A, in the amount of $6,070,000. The winning bidder is listed first, Northland Securities in partnership with Doherty and Company, at a true interest rate of 3.07 percent. The next bid, or the cover bid, was about 25 basis points higher than the 3.07 percent. So as part of this process, we also went through a rating conference call, and this isn't news to any of you probably at this point, but the electric, the Brainerd Public Utilities was downgraded from an A3 negative with negative outlook to a BAA1, which is one notch below. We had quite an extensive process through the rating conference and a number of exchanges of emails and information back and forth, this being the result. Just a couple of things that I would call to your attention in the rating report. The strengths that Moody's talks about with the BPU and the challenges, and that basically summarizes the report, the strengths being that the electric enterprise benefits from a monopoly service area and that they have unlimited rate-setting authority. The challenges that Moody saw with the BPU, increasing purchased power costs, a historic unwillingness to pass on the full cost to customers despite automatic adjustment clause, weak financial position, citing zero days of cash on hand in 2013, and the BPU failed the rate covenant in fiscal 2011. So those are the strengths and challenges Moody's recited in its report, and you have the full report that is available to you. As part of the rating process for the electric utility, because the city itself is, because the electric utility is what the rating agency refers to as an essential service of the city of Brainerd, they also looked to the city's general obligation and notched the city's general obligation down one to an A1 from a double A3. So that also was part of this process. It isn't uncommon when there is an essential service linkage between the utility and the city. Now I can answer questions or comment further on that if you'd like. At this time, however, with that summary, my recommendation is to award the sale this evening to the lowest-cost bidder by true interest rate at 3.07 percent, that bidder being Northland Securities and Doherty and Company. And I'm happy to take any questions.
A lot of the interest rate is based on the ratings, correct? So if we would have had, or they and us would have had better ratings, the interest, true interest rate probably could have been maybe, say, even a half a percent less.
Well, today, Counselor, the difference between the A category and the BAA category, which is where the utility was downgraded to, is about 10 basis points. And on this particular bond sale, 10 basis points equals about $50,000. That said, this issue was insured. So the underwriter purchased insurance, which brought that BAA1 up to a double A. So it's insured to a double A. That insurance cost you, the issuer, about $50,000, but probably saved about another $50,000 in interest. So the BAA to A is 10 basis points, to double A is another 10. So it was insured from a BAA all the way to a double A, overall saving you about $100,000 in interest. The cost of that insurance, though, is about $50,000. So there was a cost to it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Other questions?
One question, that'd be the interest rate. Can this be, you know, I guess in the next 10 years, we're in that 2%, 3% interest, and then it jumps all the way up to 4% in 2028. So if this is paid prior to that, your true cost of 3.0748 would change.
Correct, Counselor. This won't be able to be called or paid off or refinanced until, I believe it's 2023 is the first opportunity to do that. But still, at that point, we would be looking at coupons that are from 3% to 4%. And if the yield curve is as it has historically been, almost forever, it's lower in the early years. So at that point, we would look at a refunding opportunity to lower those coupons for the remaining term.
Mr. Chair, I think for the public in the audience, we should identify the net interest cost of this sale, which is $1,645,992.55. I think it's very important that we clearly understand that. And although you were rather tactful in how you said it, some of the earlier information we got made some indication that one of the reasons, or the reason for the lower rating had to do with the BPU actually said not keeping the rates up higher to produce the revenue stream. And needless to say, when I read that, I was absolutely incensed. And, you know, I think the better way of looking at it is if they hadn't spent so much money so foolishly, the revenues would have been there. And I can point out, for example, the College Drive Bridge project, where they had to cough up a significant amount of money, the land that they purchased a few years ago, far in excess of what even they had identified, then it's their needs, $600,000, $700,000. You know, for most people, and I think I always bring this down to how most people live, if you are going to spend your money down to the point that you don't have it, then yes, it's going to cost you an awful lot of money. So you didn't say it quite that way, but I thought I knew it because it's absolutely true.
Anybody else have any questions?
One quick question would be, the interest on this would be a little over $100,000 a year is what you're looking at?
Yeah, although, Counselor, it varies from year to year depending upon the coupon.
A little over the $100,000.
Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just want to remind everybody that the dam is producing 1.3 million of energy a year, a thousand $100,000.
Do you have any thoughts? Yeah, by any means.
Any other questions? If not, does anybody have a motion?
I'm going to give it a shot, Mr. Chair, if you're ready, with Mr. Freiman's help. I move that the city of Brainerd adopt a resolution awarding the sale of electric utility revenue bonds, series 2014A, in the original aggregate principal amount of, and is this the $6,193,000? Or is it the?
$6,070,000. You can use the total paramount, yes.
The sale amount is $6,070,000 to Northland Securities, Inc., and Doherty and Company, LLC, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for the payment. I assume.
Second. Any other discussion? Okay, that's the resolution. Roll call. Coe?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkinagin?
Yep.
Parks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have a, number eight is a power poles update discussion from Brainerd Public Utilities in reference to power poles that people have seen throughout the city where new poles have been put in and the old ones have been cut down and are still being utilized by other agencies.
Yep, thank you. Scott Magnuson from Brainerd Public Utilities. Per our agreements with the utilities, if we're all on a pole, they're paying us rent. We get off the pole, if we go underground, if we rebuild the line, they have the option to come with us to transfer onto the new pole. If they don't, pole becomes theirs, their responsibility. They stop paying us rent for it, and it's their responsibility if it gets knocked over, if a tree falls on the line. They're pretty good about coming with us if we do underground. Charter has been, helps us out for cost, for one thing. So we try to encourage them to come along with us. They are doing a better job of transferring. I know in South Brainerd, they've been following us the last two summers of projects. Some of the poles, even that they're on, they may have owned, and we may have never been owned, too, you know, so there's that going on out there, too. It's not all transfer poles, but some of those were, you know, back 50 years ago, it was 50/50 about Northwestern Bell Poles and BPU Poles. So over time, that's gotten to be less and less and less. Most of them are ours, so, but there are still some out there that are Sentry Links with, you know, just them on it, so. I know we've had calls of really bad ones that even just Sentry Link is on. We've called Sentry Links, they've come out and they've got off them and, you know, gone out and taken the pole out, so. Our last agreement with Sentry Link, they were pretty adamant about not having to be forced to go underground or to transfer onto a new pole. So I don't know if the agreement would have been able to get finished if we had demanded that. I don't know where, what would have gone, what would have happened there if we had tried. I think overall, it's pretty good. There's some cutoff poles next to our brand-new pole, and they're going to, they say they're going to transfer them. You know, they're a ways behind. They've got to go to corporate in Colorado or in Arizona or wherever they are and get money to do that. So, you know, we try to get, give them a good heads-up what we're going to do next summer. I talked to Sentry Link Thursday or Friday, and we're going to set up a meeting, sit down with Charter, and go over next summer's plan, so they'll have an idea of where we're working. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I ask our director, Mr. Magnus, question directly? Thank you. There's a specific instance just north of Gate Street, north of Lowell School, through the alley there, where we didn't go underground, we set new poles.
Yep.
And we moved, and I believe Charter moved, but I believe Sentry Link is still on the old pole.
Okay.
Now, I may be incorrect at that, but it's through the alleyway there. So now, the specific complaint is, is not that we have poles with one, you two, we have multiple poles back through the alley, and then the older, and I don't know why we set new poles, I presume it's because the old poles were falling down.
Yeah.
But now they're still falling down, but now it's not our problem. Except for these are all still citizens of Brainerd. So it is still our problem. It may not be the utility's legal problem, but we've directed our attorney to see if we can hopefully avoid having instances where other utilities, we don't seem to have any control over maintenance of the pole, or we have to wait until one falls down to make it a problem. I don't know. The motion out of the council was to notify the utility that there's another pole right there, please move on to that, please. It wasn't a demand, it was a, "Could you please move?" I don't know how that happened, but do you have any suggestions as to?
Well, that was a weird, that was the feeder to the paper mill.
Okay.
And we rebuilt that line, and the decision was made to go to the other side of the alley.
Okay.
So that's what we did. Normally, normally we're right next to the old pole, and for them to transfer, it's undoable, slide your carriage over and re-bolt it.
Understand.
But on that one, we decided to go on the other side.
Maybe I can be more specific in my question. Can you help ask?
I can, I certainly can. When we get together with them in a week or two here.
Yeah, we just had a circumstances in North Brainerd where there was a temporary line, and engineer holes out there was, was quite, there was no threats of any legal work. It was a, it had been laying on the ground for 90 days through these people's yards. And it was a phone, it wasn't a phone call, it was 27 emails, and I'm very grateful to Jeff, and it was very helpful, but Sentry Link, and they responded to that, understanding the situation.
Yep.
Maybe they couldn't, maybe they didn't want to, I don't know any of that, those things from their line, or from their perspective, but I think a little kindness, a little pressure, a little request, I think the poles will take care of themselves. They're going to go down. At least one of them is, I've seen it, so, okay. That'd be great.
We can do that.
Go ahead.
And it'd be like Mill Avenue, where the poles are there, and they took the utilities down, and they're just there going down the line. Is there a timeframe, or do you come along with the poles?
Those particular lines Charter has, is going to pay us to remove them for them.
Okay.
And our guys have been busy.
Okay, okay.
But we're going to get to them.
Okay.
Yep, Charter has gotten off this summer, probably 75 pole.
If I read this, and what's a little confusing to me is they have one to three months to decide whether or not they're going to stand the poles if you decide, if BPU decides, you know, get off the poles, do aerial, do other poles, or do underground. At that point, their rent stops to you, so you, I'm just going to do the whole thing, their rent stops to you, their expense stops, there's no, they own the poles then, but there's no ownership in regards to maintenance. As we talked the last time, industry standards, if we've got falling over poles that BPU decides to get off of and go some other route, who's policing these older poles? Who's policing when and if these poles are no longer suitable for the needs of the area?
It'd be, you're on your own to do it, but if, OSHA would be the ultimate. They would, they could come by and say those are not very good-looking poles.
But we don't have a contract to state, this is what happens afterwards when you own it, BPU washes their hands of it, we expect the following. But there is nothing in writing when we pass ownership to off to these other companies, correct?
Well, there's, in the writing, it says that they would own it.
And just simply that, there's, as far as maintenance, as far as insurance, as far as keeping up with industry standards, we don't have any contract language in there in regards to that.
I believe, I believe there might be something in this, in the latest Sentry Link. I'd have to check, but.
Okay. I can see that this is where there's the problem is start, is beginning, or, and maybe could be solved.
I'll look at that.
Any other questions?
Other than him becoming famous this couple of weeks?
Thanks, Scott.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Now we move down to the Personnel and Finance Committee report. Mr. Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number one has been dispensed with. Item number two is a request for information on employees with outside employment. And we have a certain number of employees that have jobs outside of their jobs with the city of Brainerd. It is part of our, the city's obligation to notify the council of these employees and positions. They were notified, Personal and Finance was notified this evening. You'll all receive your notifications, I understand, in the mail, correct? And I just want to go on the record that we have received the notifications. And they are confidential, and I stress that. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Confidential information.
Mr. Chair, could I follow up with a question? Do we not have a part in our personnel policy that identifies that a city employee who wishes to take outside employment at the same time he or she is working for the city, has to get the permission of the immediate supervisor?
That is correct.
And that has all, always been taken care of appropriately?
And my understanding is the one piece that hasn't necessarily is to let the council know. We don't have a say in yes or no, but just to know.
The policy was only adopted recently, I want to say in the last four years, when an individual was hired, and he had past employment that he wanted to continue on, and the council was made aware of it. So we didn't have a formal record. Now we do have that, and we'll maintain it going forward. That way, any new council member would be notified, so that there isn't a gap. Because with each election, you may have changeover notification process. But yes, the department head or supervisor was, has to give approval, and then council is notified for the policy.
Good question.
I just have one legal question. Out in the street, when you hear, you know, so-and-so is doing so-and-so, then we as a council cannot, you know, echo or chime in, or even have discussion then in regards to anything that we see here?
Like, you asking me a legal question, or you're asking?
I'm asking the chair to go.
Yeah, I mean, the question, you know, as I had advised Patrick last week when this question came up, is with public employees, all data that we maintain, the city maintains on them is generally presumed to be private data, and then there's a list in the statute of what things are public, such as salary, position, you know, things like that. Other employment is not in that list, so it's private data. So as the city, we can't release that about employees.
But I think his question.
If somebody says, "Did you know so-and-so?", and I look at them and go, I have to say that's private data then at that moment? I can't chime in?
That's correct.
Okay.
You can't release it. If someone else on the street is telling you, they're not, they're not necessarily bound by the Government Data Practices Act.
But, Mr. Chair, Mr. Attorney, could, in the example that Alderman Sheeler is giving, could you not say, "This person is abiding by the city's personnel policy"?
Correct.
You could say, "We do have a process, and this employee is abiding by it, so they don't think we're quite as scattered as they might otherwise be."
Thank you for that. You answered it well. Any other comments, questions? Move on.
Thank you. Item number three is the 2015 preliminary levy. Mr. Chair, we, Personal and Finance does have a motion if, when you levy.
Okay, one, just one second. I just want to briefly explain that any motion that comes out of Personnel and Finance and is ultimately agreed to by the council is strictly a motion that sets the upper limit as to what the levy limit can be. And it can always be reduced, but it cannot be reduced. So I guess what I would like is for people to consider taking what the Personnel and Finance Committee has and not necessarily debate the individual items, which we may have to look at either after the election or some other meeting, to actually look at how we can reduce the budget and not necessarily talk about the specifics tonight.
So we're talking about levy, not?
Exactly, yeah. We have, we have to set a levy by September 29th, but we have until near the end of December to come up with the actual budget.
Can I blame them then for what's going on? Personal Finance Committee? I'm just joking.
Absolutely. No, 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 we'll take it, bring it on.
So with that being said, go ahead, Mr. Bevins.
Thank you. I'd like to yield the chair to, or to the floor to Mr. Pritchett.
And I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chair. I move that City of Brainerd, Crow Wing, County Crow Wing, State of Minnesota, the following sums of the levy for the taxes payable for the year I move that, um, City of Brainerd, Crow Wing, County Crow Wing, State of Minnesota, the following sums are the levy for the taxes payable for the year two thousand and fifteen. And that sum is four million, eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, which would be a ten percent levy, levy increase, plus the one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty for the HRA.
Second.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chair? I, I wanna, I, I just wanted to say I had Mr. Pritchett make the motion so I could speak. I, I, I will vote against this motion. Um, I really think that it's, it's a good motion. But I also really think we can, we can do better. And I just felt that we are letting ourselves off the hook a little bit by making this motion. And I, I think there, there was an alternative motion that was, um, not adopted by the committee. And I actually think we can do better than that. And I tend to think that the, the more you let yourself off the hook. And Mr. Pritchett and I had a, had a good disagreement on this. But the higher you set the bar, the higher you're gonna jump. And I don't know how to explain it any better. And, uh, so I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Mr. Pritchett?
And I'd just like to explain where I was coming from on this. I have not been on the council before. One of the things that Councilman Bevan said is when we set the bar high and we come on low, come down lower, we don't spend that. That's not how I'm looking at it. I'm hoping we can come under eight. I'm hoping we can come as low as possible. But this levy, levy is just setting the ceiling. We can always go under, we can't go over. And what I said too is there is no easy way out. Raising the levy is hard, lowering the levy is hard. A lot of the items on here, um, are, they're not fluff. They're, they're things that are vitally needed and we're gonna have to have some really tough budget discussions as to what's gonna be cut. So that's kinda where I'm coming from.
And I would like to chime in, I guess if I may. It's a, it's really easy to say that you want a zero percent increase. Uh, I would want a zero percent increase. I don't wanna pay any more money. I'm a taxpayer as well. However, in order to run a business, there are expenses. And I feel that some of the expenses that were shared, we, we looked at those, we've cut some. I think there's additional cuts that we can make elsewhere in addition to what we've got. Um, however, there are certain things that we just have no control over. Um, certain things, and we've discussed in, and I won't be redundant, but we discuss in Personnel and Finance. As far as insurance, as far as workman's comp, as far as fuel costs, as far as our water tower, as far as the salt, salt and sand building that we haven't budgeted for that we need. Um, there are expenses that we just are choosing to ignore at this point. Um, and they're just not gonna go away. So, yes, I think at ten percent, uh, at this point across the board, uh, with the hopes that we can reduce it even further would be ideal. That's my goal, but we have to start somewhere.
My question was, where did we leave it? I thought we were lower than this when we came out of our budget. Did we come out, we were? We were higher.
Much higher. Twelve percent. Yep, almost thirteen percent.
In my dreams that I was lower.
I like the way you were dreaming.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to support the motion either. That this council has become engaged in a process that it should not have. And I have said this a couple of times during our budget meetings and I'm gonna reiterate. I think the council's job is acceptable. I think the council's job was to say to the administrator, this is what it will be this year. The levy will be, pick your choice, five percent over last. The levy will be two percent less than last. The levy will be identical. Or you could go in a different way and say, the budget will be four percent less than last. Budget and levy are not identical statements. Instead, we spent many hours working and reworking and carrying on about what we could do and what we couldn't do and where can we cut, where can't we cut. Things that frankly are the administrator and department heads' job. If I had a chance to make the motion, and I won't unless this motion fails. My motion would be that we set the levy not to exceed four percent of the previous year's levy. And that the administrator and the department head will meet that. They will then bring that product back to the council. That is without the, the council is not setting the priorities then. The council is not dictating who loses an employee or who gets a new dump truck or any of that. The council is doing what its policy role should be. That is to set the target for the financial infrastructure for this next year. That is frankly the only thing that makes sense. The way we went at this budget, and with all due respect to all of you, council worked very hard on this. I don't think that we did our job. Our job should be to say, that's why we have an administrator. To say, this is our target for two thousand and fifteen. And the administrator then goes back to the department heads, this is the council's target. You come back with your budget, you meet that. That didn't happen. That should happen. That could happen, but it won't happen. We'll be going through this endlessly with very poor results regardless. Maybe you can come down another two percent, maybe you can come down another one percent. How anyone can be satisfied saying that a ten percent or an eight percent increase in your budget is reasonable. It boggles my mind. When my necessary expense goes up in my house, I have to figure a way to lower something. That's the worst. I won't be supporting this motion, but there is a better way to do it.
Yeah, I'd now just like to jump in for a second. I think, um, and Patrick can kinda help me, but we were at a percentage prior. What was the percentage we were prior to this? Um, we just kind of, from our workshop, we were at like twenty or?
Oh, I think the number was like thirty-something.
Thirty percent is.
When you put together all the?
Everything.
Okay, so we have worked about twenty percent off of this in budget. I know that we were doing a lot of hacking. I have not seen where you have to get to this point from your committee. But, um, I know that we did a lot of hacking in our, um, workshop. So, um, you know, to say that, and I'm a business person, if somebody just called me up and said, you're gonna set your business like this without knowing the details. I would look at that person and say, no, you, we don't do that. I would disagree with Mary there. You don't just set something without going through all this work. But we did to see why you are saying what you're saying and have a reason for it. So, and we do have a reason and you guys done a wonderful job on that. Am I agreeing to this, you know, as far as the dollar amount? Um, I'm going to tonight, but you know, yeah, I would like to see it in order myself.
Mr. Chairman, that is exactly the process I identified, is exactly the process. Crow Wing County goes precisely, go and speak with the administrator if you doubt me. And they have been successful in reducing their levy for at least three years in a row. And if anybody feels they're being neglected by Crow Wing County Service, raise your hand. I think Crow Wing County is doing an admirable job. And that is precisely how they do it. Their boards, such as this council, are the board of directors. It's our job to set the goal.
Um, my, uh, number one question is, are we at the eleventh hour here? Do we have, let's just say, for example, that this didn't pass tonight, then what?
Then we would have to have a special meeting to pass the levy limit. Cause it has to be done by September twenty-ninth.
But there's no, we, okay, so we would have a, so next Monday night we would have. Okay, um, I guess with the thing that is haunting me, I can see the, the basic budget. But the thing that I'm struggling with is the condition of City Hall and the potential of what could happen if that, um, isn't passed this fall. We have things like, you know, just the maintenance of the building. We've got heating and air conditioning here and our other buildings. We've got a leaky roof at the fire station. And we have federal laws telling us that we have to cover our salt and sand files. That's something that we don't have. There is no option. So if we don't cover ourself for that in case it doesn't pass, seems to me it has to come from somewhere. This is, from my perspective, really important stuff to deal with now.
So you're suggesting that you wanna go higher?
No, 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 not at all. I, I would, I would pick a lower number than ten. But I'm thinking that, and Mary knows better than, than, a lot of you guys know better than I do as to what happens after that. But I would really be working hard to bring that down to five, if at all possible. But I just, I'm concerned about covering these things that are going up for about, you know, in November. These are the same things I don't think.
I mean, um, and I think Donnie brought up a good point. Uh, we, if everything were to stay the same, say that they did last year, um, we look at our insurance, we look at the PERA. Um, there are numerous very large increases that the city is gonna be having to pay for. I mean, it, uh, we don't make widgets, we can't sell, uh, any kind of toys or, uh, any houses or anything like that to, to gain additional monies. Uh, for the last several years, we have kicked the can down the road. As Chip mentioned, uh, the petition that killed the redoing or the fixing of the air conditioning, the heating, the salt, uh, building that really, uh, like Chip said, I mean, that's, that needs to be covered. I mean, we got sand and salt out there that, uh, when it rains, you know, it happened with rain and salt. And so when it's gone, it's, it dissipates. Um, it's, it's, we're, this is like a business and yet we don't, the only income we have is tax dollars where they're coming from LGA or taxpayers that pay the income tax. And, and we provide excellent services. But one of the things that you can't keep doing is putting off things that need to be done year after year after year. Uh, to say that, uh, that they, we should as a council make the decision that we are only gonna raise it five percent or the levy is gonna only go five percent or ten percent and have the staff and the department heads and all of those fine people, um, do what you have to do uh, to lower it down to that. Um, you're back to the point where you, we are to the point in, I think in this city that if we do not expend the dollars that need to be done to take care of the things, plus the increases in all of the insurance and everything else, we're gonna be hurting as a city in providing not only services, but also in providing for our citizens, uh, what they come to expect as far as, uh, us running this as, uh, a liable business. And, uh, I, I, I realize that it's an election year, yeah. Um, as far as the county, uh, talked to some of the people at the county. Uh, they have not risen their levies. But in talking with some of the people in authority there, uh, they're almost like the city of Brainerd and where it's coming to haunt them and they, um, and mark my words. It's, they're, they're gonna have, uh, a day of reconciliation also where their levy is gonna have to increase. Uh, otherwise, they are not gonna be able to provide and do the things that need to be done in running the county. So I, I feel that, uh, what the council, what our administrator, department heads have done to come down to this percentage, I think is admirable. Um, I, I, I know it's not an easy task to, um, say that we probably will have to increase, uh, the taxes. But by the same token, if you don't, you're gonna let the city deteriorate to the point where the can is not only gonna get rusted, but it's not gonna be of any value anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I can ask, each percentage that we're talking here is how many dollars? So you, you know, let's say Mary said five and we're at ten.
Roughly twenty, fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand per percentage. So there's, there's a difference of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from where we're at to where Mary would be. Okay, that's what I just wanted to.
Okay, and, you know, I, I really don't agree with the ten percent either. But from where we started, because of all of the increases with, um, insurance and with PERA and some other things that we didn't have any control over, I think we need to start someplace. Um, I, I see what Mary's saying and, and, uh, I kind of agree with that. But at the same time, I feel that it, one of the duties of the city council is to over, overview the budgets, which includes the levy and that we would have a say in where the cuts are. Um, and, and perhaps we would if we just told the staff that they get X number of dollars and then they decide where to, where to cut it. But then, you know, where do we come from? Where, where do we go? Cause, um, we need to have input on, on those individual items. Um, I, I guess I'm not positive where I wanna go with this. It's ten percent, even though it's probably the minimum that we really need. There are things that I know that we will end up potentially cutting. Um, we, we don't know for sure what the insurance rate is, will end up being. Um, we have health insurance and we have, um, a couple of other funds that we have not gotten back the estimates yet. We don't know the final dollar amounts. Uh, the administration, um, estimated high, just to try to cover ourselves. So I think that we will, we will be able to reduce this. How far we can reduce it, I'm not sure. Um, I don't like the ten percent, but at the same time, I know that we can cut it um, by two or three percent at a minimum. And I know that, uh, others on the council have had experience in the past where when you set the levy, it won't go down. I think that as a group, we've all agreed that there are things that we need to take a little more time on trying to, trying to figure out how we can do things, uh, cheaper and be able to reduce the ten percent. But I also agree with Chip in the fact that we don't wanna cut ourselves to the point where we don't have funds available to do the unexpected. And, um, you know, we have a water tower over here that quite frankly is not in our budget right now. Uh, we don't know what we can do. I mean, we don't wanna tear it down. And I know that that's, I only mention that because we don't even have the funds available right now to pay to have it tore down. So somehow or another, we have to find funds and do cuts. So we all know that there are things that we need, we need to cut. So with that being said, um, I will be voting for this, but I also anticipate that we will end up with somewhere between four and five percent. That would be a goal. It's kind of a lofty goal in a way, but with that being said, and we have a motion and a second on, on the floor.
Roll call, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Coe?
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Evans?
Nope.
Sheila?
Yes.
Orkinagin?
Yep.
Parks?
Yes.
Okay, it passes five to two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number four are a couple of police department issues. Uh, the first issue is the CSO's, uh, new CSO truck. And the motion would be to authorize the purchase of the new CSO truck, but the expenditure is not to exceed thirty. not to exceed $30,000, an isim move.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Clarification. In the memo, it lists a, a capital in our favor of purchasing and selling off old cars of $13,000. And that's, that, that amount is actually closer to $8,000, which is roughly a $5,000 deduction. As you note, then, a couple of lines in the center, center of that, that leaves about $35,000. It's actually closer to $30,000, which is why the motion came in as, and we still should be able to, to, to satisfy everything and, and not affect the budget.
Any other discussion?
Did you say, I'm sorry, Kelly, that we could sell that truck for $8,000?
No, 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 no. We've actually already, we don't have the money in the bank, but we've got a couple of things that, that are already sold. We'll probably get the money, I think, within thirty, I think, within thirty days.
I got it, I got it.
Roughly, is what we're thinking, isn't it? Yeah, I think so. So, but the, the anticipated amount was 13,000, and I think we're actually getting the 13, but due to how this actually works, you know, Connie's got a better.
Can I explain? When we issued the equipment certificates, and that was to purchase a couple squads cars, the city hall staff cars that we issued at the end of 2013. We've been over and under budget, and there's about $8,000 left of those equipment certificates that we're going to use to purchase the new CSO vehicle. Then with what we have sold on auction of certain police cars is what's going to make up the difference to purchase the new CSO truck.
Thank you.
That pickup truck, I'm not sure I'd let my daughter drive that one.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Thank you. The second police department item is to accept with regret the resignation of CSO Lauren Taylor and authorize the hiring of a replacement, an isim move.
Second.
Discussion?
I would like to thank them for the two-week notice.
Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
And the last police department item is to accept with regret the resignation of CSO slash temporary records management technician Caitlin Robinson, an isim move.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just so you remember, we did authorize the replacement of this position quite some time earlier in the year, and that, it just, this is when it worked out to go. So we will be posting for a new, correct, yeah, posting for replacing this position. Next.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Sheeler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have nine items on the agenda, seven of them are listed. Item number one, the land exchange proposal. The motion is to approve the proposal as presented with the land swap, and I would so move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
I have a question. Only because, only because of past dealings, but, you know, what I don't see here, and I, and I really, really would like to, like to see it, a pretty good description of the swap, but I don't see the engineer saying, I think we should do this. And I, the reason I ask that is because we've swapped some land with Mr. Isambro before, and I'm pretty sure we got a lot of swamp. And, and I don't know if that's going to, we're going to be able to ever use it in the, in, in my lifetime. And I, I don't mean to be critical of, of the decision, I was on the council when we did it, but I really would like to see your recommendation.
Yeah. Fight Ken, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think this is a, a, a good swap. I think it benefits them and it benefits the city considerably. All the land that we would be receiving is high and dry, and I think it will make the parcel that we own much more marketable.
Thank you. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Item number two, MINDOT agreement 05031, city attachment. The motion is to approve the agreement. Everything, with everything pushed back, we're just going to agree to send it for next year. So.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Item number three, disposal of transit bus number 113. The motion is to approve the disposal. They're going to sell for salvage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
I'm moving along so fast, getting into the paper. Item number four, set a public hearing to consider 2014 special assessments. And the special assessments will be bullets improvement 1317, which is Little Street from South Seventh to Southeast 13th. And number two bullet is improvement 1318, which is 10th Avenue Northeast from Highway 25 to Highway 210. And bullet number three is improvement 1402, South Fifth Street from Laurel to Front. Item number four, improvement 1319, that's 10th Avenue Northeast from J Street to L Street, 11th Avenue Northeast from J Street to L Street, J Street Northeast from 10th to 11th Avenue, and then L Street Northeast from 10th to 11th Avenue. And then bullet point number five, downtown snow removal and special service district. And item number six was 2014 nuisance abatement and citation. And Jeff said the cost calculation will be done on October 6th with this, and I would so move that we approve.
When did you read it?
Oh, yes, the improvement projects for this will be, special assessments for this will be on 7:30 PM Monday, October 20th, 2014. Thank you for that.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Item number five, code enforcement activity. We'll always have this on the second meeting of every month. If you look on here, and one of the things we learned tonight, this does not include zoning ordinance violations. So this is just code enforcement and anything with Mark and zoning ordinance violations. And I asked Mark, maybe the next time he could come up with a number so we could also see that added onto it. But basically, we ran over, and there was one of the questions was if, you know, do these require permits on property maintenance violations? And if there would be like some kind of a conflict there because we would be asking somebody to fix something, and then also, you know, they're required to take out a permit. There was only less than a half a dozen of them that would require that out of the 294, so it didn't really seem like a huge issue. But other, also, we brought in $26,500 worth of revenue, which is very, very good. That's over projection from last year. And we're right on, pretty much from where we were last year, we're pretty much going right along at the same pace, so we haven't lost any steam on our code enforcement. Okay, all, that's just an update, and if anybody else has got anything to add.
Just that the 26 to five does include the 2,000 from in the property, as I understand it.
Yes, right. Yep. Item number six, five-year construction plan. We had a meeting, and a lot of you got to read it before we got to tell you, on the meeting that we had, and Mary probably can chime in, but we decided there was quite a few projects that was listed as everybody got in their packet for 2015. What we put as priority is project number 1306, 28th Street, Southeast Oak Street to Highway 25. That project we had promised everybody. And then for project number two would be the 1408, which is 13th Street, Southeast Manholes and Sewer Crossings. That particular project, we have to be in conjunction with the county. They're going to tear County Road 13 and, and next year, and we're just going to put the utilities underneath it, not put them underneath, repaired ones underneath.
It's County Road, is it 45?
45.
Yeah, County Road 45, Southeast 13th. Yeah, you're right on. And that would also pick up on Chicago 12th and 13th, and also Portland and Maple. There's a couple of spinoffs there. And then the third job we were going to take if, and there was some disagreement on it, is Jackson Street. And that's 1403, and it sounds like Baxter's going to do Jackson Street next year, and we just didn't have the funding or the backing in our committee to really approve going forward with that, so there's going to be some more discussion on that. We're going to go 100%, you know, with the crack sealing and the seal coating and the street patching and the streets striping. There was a lot of support out of committee to go forward with that, so Jeff is going to present this at our next meeting where they cipher on this, but any discussion on that, you can go ahead. We didn't go into 2016 because by the time we start chopping here, we had enough 2015 to roll into 2016.
You need a motion or is that just discussion?
I think it's just discussion.
Okay.
That'll be brought back up. Item number seven, downtown landscape assessments. Dave Perninger is here, he was in our committee. He had a 60-40 plan, a motion out of committee, and Mary, you have that motion there?
I can find it. We kind of included it in the one where we talked about setting the date per Monday, the 20th. It does include the downtown snow removal and special services, but the motion would be to direct staff to proceed with distributing notice of hearing and proposed assessment amounts to affected downtown property owners based on the historic distribution of snow removal and 100% of the street state.
Related to.
Related to services.
Now, second your motion. Chip Ken.
Any other discussion?
Did you say 100? May, may I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just clarification, you said 100% of street scale, not, not the 40-60.
Okay. Other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Item number eight, which is not on there, will be IT services. Mary had asked to put this on. We had in our budget, and I know we had talked about this and we can go on, but she was looking for, you know, outside contracting or working with the county, but I was, I'll jump in real quick. I had contacted Datacom, Tim Stephan, and he knows Patrick Russo very well, and he does the county seat as, as an IT, and he said he works there and also a lot of banks and stuff like that, but his rate is like 95 bucks an hour, and he'd be more than happy to contract with the city as if we don't go with another IT person. I mean, and that's where Mary's going to go, so I'll let Mary take it from there.
Well, I would request that small subcommittee be appointed to look at all options for IT. In the budget originally, there was a new employee, and the discussion that took place in our various budget committees had to do with pretty much equipment and that sort of thing. Clearly, the number one expense in any city budget is personnel. And so I really did not want to see us adding another county employee or city employee to our IT department. I am not suggesting that the IT department isn't important or that it doesn't need perhaps more, but I wanted to look at alternatives. And so I did visit with the county administrator to see is there any potential there in maybe combining with them. We pay our fair share, they pay their fair share. And I am going to quote him almost exactly, because I don't want to put words in his mouth that would come back to haunt me, and he said, I am very open to dialogue. Additionally, I asked, made some inquiries about contracting, which apparently our chairman had also done. And there are various groups that do contract, go contract with the city or IT services. And there again, you decide what you need and develop your contract, but you don't have any additional personnel. So I would ask, Mr. Chair, if you were to appoint a small subcommittee to look at all options for IT services, and I would recommend that you would appoint someone from this committee, someone from personnel finance, perhaps yourself, and clearly our administrator and perhaps someone from our IT department, whoever you think is appropriate. But I think then we need to begin reaching out to see what options there might be. And if they don't work for us, at least we try. Got nothing to lose by.
The only question I have is simply, what if at $95 an hour, we start racking up more bills than what we would pay.
I guess I would say that that, that would be part of the contract, that you have to find out what services they're going to provide. I guess I'd like to put together this committee, and I would like to maybe interview a couple different entities and have them come back and give us an RFP, or we'd have to, RFP, to give us some discussion, because we want to make sure that it fits into what we need, the needs that we have. So, if you guys don't mind, I'd like to appoint Mary, and I know that was something that.
I would like very much to be on that. Thank you.
Who would like to be on it from?
I would like to, please.
Okay. And, Mr. Russell?
Of course, a lot of those.
I'm going to excuse myself because I may have a conflict of interest depending on the company, so I'd rather not go that route. And Jeff? Who would you, you'd have Sean or yourself?
Well, the, yes, I think, I think we should have Sean probably involved in that.
And you?
And, and myself.
Okay.
And I, I would definitely recommend the chief of police also, since the police department is a huge user of IT services. So it's got a little larger than we wanted, but my thought is that you'd meet as a group and then kind of put together, you know, some questions so that we know what it is that we want, and then maybe put together an RFP. I really do think that we can find a way to get around actually hiring somebody right now, because, you know, Mary, Mary pointed out the reasons for that.
Any other discussion?
So that would be a motion instead of a committee, or just going to set one up? I would so move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Item number nine, classic coatings for the water tower. They all been dropped off, a little thing here. Basically, I'm not going to approve this, and I'm going to start just quickly.
Coating?
Yeah, it's classic. Did you get one of these?
Nope.
No.
Okay.
He and I've been cut.
Okay, well, I'll have to explain to.
Double down for us.
Yeah, we got a bid earlier from Classic Protective Coatings for around $25,000, and what they were going to do back then is quickly, you know, move in, mobile, mobile in and use 125-foot lift to get up there and go completely around the tower and scale off all the, the loose stuff, and then also have Bron be able to do some core sampling and everything else. I watched the operation very carefully on Monday when they set themselves up and went up there and spent a couple hours hanging just from the north side, and they didn't go all the way around, they just did the loose stuff on the north side. They did not use the lift, they used the, you know, the spider web style, which they just moved from the current water tower that they were working on with BPU, so they had a mobilization of just less than a couple of blocks. And I have said this, it looked like two men in a truck operation from what they had bid to us. But anyway, they came back and they said that they would like $19,870 of the $25,000. And in their original proposal, they had proposed three days of work. They were there about six hours total, and then they did not put the lift there. Plus, they did not allow the core drilling that needed by Bron engineering, so there was no core drilling done, because when I talked to Bron, they would not climb up there and, and do core drilling. So we did not get what we, in our proposal, and I think $19,870 is way too high. So my motion is, besides, you know, the mobilization wasn't there that they had said, and it was less than a day and no lift, and it was no emergency part, our motion is to deny this, take it back to Jeff and, and have him come back with another.
Seven. Discussion?
Local person, did we get a second?
Yes, we did, yeah.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, excellent.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
End of report.
Thanks, Mr. Sheeler.
Hey, unfinished business. We have a public hearing scheduled for the vacation of 24th Street. Do you want to, I'll, I'll start, I'll start a public hearing at 8:40. Is there anybody here for the public hearing? If you are, please come to one of the two mics, state you need, and then go ahead.
My name's Branda Shaw.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm here for the vacate at 24th Street.
And your address, I'm sorry.
Oh, nine, my residence is 916 Bluff Avenue, Brainerd. I've been up to the. Oh, nine, my residence is nine sixteen Bluff Avenue, Brainerd. I've been up to the office here quite a bit over the last couple of months. The original idea was to put in a garage. I think we had the alley vacated on that property earlier this spring to put in the garage. As we had more discussions, decided putting in a new house probably near the same time would be a better idea, and so that was the first idea of having the street vacated. As it sits right now, the septic is sitting in the middle of that street. I'm not sure how it got there, but it's there. So the last couple of months, I've been up here to the building office trying to get some stuff going with that. The last thing I found out was I contacted a septic inspector to have them come and see if the septic is in compliance, and he informed me at that point that he would not come because it's not in compliance, and it won't be in compliance unless the street is vacated. And the reason is because it's not on Bob's property. It's in the middle of a street, so it will not meet compliance, no matter what shape it's in. So we couldn't go ahead with the building permit for the garage at this point because we can't even get it inspected because it's failing at this point because it's not on the property. And so Jeff had told me to make sure I was here tonight to tell you that because we didn't know that at the time. We were even asking for the street to be vacated then, so that's another glitch in the puzzle.
Questions? I question the words that somebody would not come out. I was a licensed inspector at one time in my days, and that was never an issue. So then I just did make a phone call to Bob Bartel from the county, and he said it's not an issue for him to come out. They do not ask, and he will not, and if you called him, he would do an inspection for you, so that would not be an issue. They don't ask if it's where it's at because that's a land issue. Their issues are just, you know, if the septic is meeting separation, and they just go through the criteria of a good septic, like lifting up the cover and check out the, but they do not ask any land issue. And he would specifically go out in two years.
Okay, I didn't, I don't know anything about septic, other than the calls that I've made. His comment was that he could come, but then he would have to charge us again to do it after the vacate if it was passed, and just that it wouldn't comply because it wasn't on the property. So it was kind of a.
Mark that question and mark it answer that if there's.
Question being?
Would it comply?
Would it comply? Well, I don't know about the testing.
Okay.
But as far as the septic system being in a platted right-of-way, if it's there and it's been there for thirty years, forty years, fifty years.
Thirty years.
I would think that we would not require that septic system to have to be removed at this time until, until a city, perhaps the street is platted and sewer and water is extended, or until it fails.
Thank you. Is the septic system failing at this point?
It seems to be working properly. We haven't had any issues.
I think the confusion comes from the word compliance because it has nothing to do with who owns the land that it's sitting on. That becomes, you need to, or the owner needs to, if the city owns the property that it's sitting on, if they, if the inspector needs permission from the city to inspect it, that's one thing, but that has nothing to do with compliance. Compliance is how many bedrooms your home has, to how big the tank is, and if it's meeting the water tunnel separation.
Okay.
So that word is kind of getting thrown in there, which may cause some confusion. So if, if, maybe taking up Mr. Sheeler's suggestion of calling the gentleman, that would actually come and do the septic inspection, I wouldn't use it. But it has nothing to do with the fact that it's not sitting on land that he doesn't own.
Okay.
Was that a county employee?
No, it's a county listed, there's a bunch of inspectors.
Certified inspector.
Certified inspectors that you would call. And, you know, and I asked them specifically the question, I'm not gonna vacate this just because we have a septic system on there and she can't put the garage up, so, you know, if that was the reason. So I wanted to make sure that that was not the reason.
Mark?
Following up on Councilman Sheeler's comment, I was over at the county today, and there's a list of late state licensed septic system professionals that they provide to property owners that have septic systems. And there are thirty-seven licensed inspectors in the area that'll inspect septic systems. And the individual I talked to at the county today, that I was, I told him what had been said about not inspecting the system, and he felt that to be odd, that they would not inspect the system. So perhaps if one inspector does not want to do it, there might be thirty-six others, and perhaps the one you talked to isn't on this list.
Okay.
And you can have this list.
Perfect. Thank you. I need all the help I can get.
So we want to?
I have a bunch of reasons why I would say, do you want a motion to deny? Or do you want a motion before?
Or do we want to bring it back after?
Still on a public hearing.
Yeah, we're still on the public hearing. You have anything else to say?
I guess then it just would revert back to then the plans as far as when the house would be done next spring.
So when you, when the house is done, and I don't know if you can see this picture, but when the house is done, this is your, is the property, this is what we're talking about, and this is where the septic is, underneath the twenty-four. So where will a house be moved? The house will be actually moved back away from Oak Street? So there's no chance of putting the septic in front of the house on the property, rather than? You can with an insulated pipe. That's, I mean, they do it with. Oh, you wouldn't drive over the mound system, but you can drive over the insulated pipe that's servicing the house to the septic. So I, and again, with the septic design, I guess I would question the reasoning for vacating that property until such time that the septic is failing.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, is there anybody else here for the public hearing? Thank you very much. We'll, we'll have some discussion. Anybody else here for the public hearing for the vacating of the Twenty-Fourth Street? Okay, public hearing's closing at eight forty-eight. Discussion?
And I can go, I wrote down a bunch of reasons why I would, I'm gonna be saying no to this. Number one is the reason we vacated this alley a few months ago is the alley part was the villa garage that when Pete in the alley to this date, I have not seen plans or anything, you know, presented, and I even checked with Mark, and nobody's even come to our planner with any kind of a plan or idea of, or worked with our city on this. As a matter of fact, I've done more work with the city on this than the property owners have. Number two, the reason they want to vacate now Twenty-Fourth is for a new house to be built, and I haven't seen any plans on that, and I don't know if that'll ever happen, so I don't like to work and do things on speculation, which I think we're working on here. Vacating the alley recently, the property, that, this the alley, the property owner gained five thousand four hundred square feet of property, and we just bought some at a dollar a square foot, just to give you an idea. If we vacate the, the street, that's another nineteen thousand eight hundred square feet of property, and that would be at a dollar a square foot, another nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars added to the value of this. There are four or more possible lots that can be developed out this street behind these homes that are high and dry. There are property owners that are affected by this decision that, that have property beyond these parcels, including the city. And the septic system was constructed in the street about thirty years ago, and it's currently in use and should have never been put there, and it was a pound's back while they put it in, but I don't know the process of when it was put in, but my feeling is I would just leave it until it needs to be. Vacating streets bother me because of ditching, walking trails, snowmobile trails, and I'll go into, you know, and this is one of the things I had put down. There is nobody, not at the planner or the engineering department, that can forecast where the city will be a hundred years from now. And a hundred years ago, if you're looking back where the city has, you know, start vacating, and you have no idea. And I hate the city giving up property without, you know, really, hundred, two hundred years from now, we are giving that up, and we'll have to purchase it back for whatever reason. And my job is to protect the city and all taxpayers' investment, which this is our, you know, our investment. And we just had to do a buyback of property that we vacated recently because, you know, we needed some. And then I also want to make, bring this up. We just held four properties in a conservation at our last meeting because of future and current city uses, and that were gonna be auctioned off, and the reasons were future road expansions and stormwater piping, utilities, and smart thinking. So I just, you know, I'm gonna say no because I haven't seen a reason, I haven't seen a plan. I think we're, it's kind of a knee jerk decision just by one inspector saying this needs to be done until everything falls together. I think we have done enough with the alley, and I also think with the alley, they can get this garage. I'm gonna be supportive that the garage can be built and work with them on the house.
Is there a motion?
My motion is to deny.
There are second.
Second.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chair, we're out there and sat on their property for a while, knocked on the door, but nobody came through. And I drove, they have kind of a U-shaped driveway, you go in one and go out the other, and drove that and then came back and went around again and did the same thing a few times. Tried to visualize it, clarified with the city engineer what we're actually, what the actual street is. I don't see any potential whatsoever for development back there. If, if each of you have it gone back there, you should. It's wet. And all those good things, good for drainage, but that's about it. The actual street is between two. I don't see how you could really build a street. Be a trail would be more likely. Some of the issues, the situations that Alderman Sheeler compared are not the same. The plan that we asked the county to knock the conservation. Not everything is identical, and those are not. I looked at this, I don't foresee any use for that we would ever put in a street. I don't see. Additionally, if they do build, there'll be tax hurdles, and, you know, God knows, the city needs some tax hurdles. So we'd have some additional tax hurdles. It might even be an incentive for nearby property to do something, increase some stuff. There's a lot of nice people living out there, and some of them would like to do some improvements to their property as well. I don't like to just give up property either, but you always have to look at what you get in return. And what we'd be getting in return is a considerable improvement to that existing property that is the ability for them to do something with it. And so I would support it. I would like to see us work more closely sometimes with property owners on some of those issues, see what could be done that would not disadvantage the city. A hundred years from now, we're gonna all be traveling in drones, Gary, so we won't need the street.
Can I add one more thing?
But anyway, I, I would support the request. I would not support the motion. I think if we can work with property owners, I think we should.
I want everybody to know, we did work with them by vacating, and that's all that. But when we talked about that being wetland, the elevation out there is twelve oh six, and Jeff put out here, the front steps out here, or the street out here is twelve oh eight. So it's only a two-foot difference for elevation from Laurel Street to where that swamp, what we call swamp. Swamp because it's holding water, but the elevation is there the same as development. It's only two feet lower than the street out here, according to Jeff's elevations. So it's not a big hole. It's just basically retaining water that, you know, without the proper ditching and everything else that's needed. So there is a lot of potential back there, and I don't like seeing us landlocked that area, you know, it's like, but go ahead.
Seven?
You know, I, I want all that stuff that Mary said. I want us to be supportive of our citizens towards encourage development. But I also understand what, what Gary said, too. We don't want to be giving away all our, all our land, and who knows what the potential will bring. But it seems like there would be a simple solution to this. Have the property appraised. If there's no certificate of occupancy on a new house within so many years, they pay for the property. And that's easy enough. If they're just wanting the property to increase value, and this whole house thing is a sham, then I understand what Gary's saying. On the other side, you know, they were just giving away something that, that's just gonna benefit them. And, and historically, I also understand that it kind of looks like that, that this particular property owner may, may have that propensity. That being said, this is an easy solution. Get put right in the, in the D transfer that it's twenty-five thousand dollars, or pick the amount, do, and within five years, our certificate of occupancy to the new house. We sold it to them. We didn't give it to them. And if they don't build, who cares? Then we got all the stuff that Mary wanted in the check.
Yeah, that ain't part of the motion.
Yeah, well, Mary.
You have to come up to the mic if you're gonna ask a question.
I'm just trying to understand what Kelly's saying. So there would be some, there could be, there could be something signed that would say that, as long as the house was up within a certain amount of time, it was fine? Is that, I, I don't understand what that.
Right, it would be, it would be a, would be a public, a vacation.
Okay.
If, if as Mr. Sheeler suggests, Mr. Chair, is this all right that I'm answering this?
We're, we got a motion on the floor.
I would like Mr. Rosso to.
Yeah, I need to work in concert with this city attorney because my understanding of the public right-of-way, we cannot sell it. We have to vacate it if we determine that there is no public purpose. It's not a, if, and or but, and Eric's confirmed that or not.
Thank you. Yes, that's what I was gonna, gonna add there.
Not saying your idea's bad, I'm just saying we can't do it.
You have to do it exactly that way, but maybe there's some way.
Just for clarification, I know we vacated the alley. Is this portion of the alley that's directly behind their house that we recently vacated, correct? Just for clarification.
Yes.
Okay. So I just think it's premature to vacate a potential roadway when we don't have a site evaluation of a potential home slash garage, and I just, I, a, a, a future design for a septic system, I can't imagine that all of that stuff can't fit on that particular property that they already own. So I'm, I, I question why we would vacate a piece of property that the city owns by just giving it up because thirty years ago, they just put the septic, you know, without knowing where their property lines were. I'm, I, I, without having any site evaluation, and I, I'm gonna go right back to, that is the reason why I believe we really pushed for the small homes recently in order to fit all, you know, a home, a garage, a structure, and still meet all setbacks. And I understand there's usually city sewer and water available to that, but this is a different condition where it has to have a septic, but there's a lot of land there, and without seeing some sort of site plan for a home, I, I just think we're putting the cart before the horse by vacating a piece of property.
Rosso has a comment.
Yeah, I can just reiterate, under the statute, if we're gonna vacate a public right-of-way, and Jeff's identified this earlier when we vacated the alley, if we do, if the city council determines they do not see a future public need for that road right-of-way, then you can vacate it. If there is a chance, and that's where Mr. Sheeler has been commenting, that there could be some construction in the future, and Jeff added some details in the packet about previous plans to drain that area, and you, you determine that there's no future use, then you can vacate it. Not if they can build a house on there or not. It has to do with if you determine that there's no future need for it. That's what the, the question really comes down.
Thank you.
But I have one more thing. I did ask Jeff also, is, is there not another area right there where we could extend the street or have a street? And he said that. So if you were to vacate, if you were implying that there was no use, and there was some time in the future that you wanted the street going back there, yes, yes, there is area. So just wanted to bring that out, too, because I did ask Jeff.
Mark?
To complicate this further.
Oh, great.
There's potential for lots to be created on this street. There's potential for lots to be created on this street. If you look at the plan that is the one that shows proposed vacation and previously vacated, that has the parcel numbers on it. That block from Oak Street to the next, by the street to the north is 300 feet. The vacated alley would have been right in the middle, which would have been, what's that, 75 feet? So from, it's, there's the potential, or 150, excuse me, there's the potential from the, for four lots to be created on the north end of that block going east and west. Subdividing east and west and putting two lots on the east side of the street, two lots on the west side of the street. You following me?
Can I ask you one question? Can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
Did you not have a developer or realtor recently ask you about this?
I did.
Okay. Just to let everybody know, there was recently a developer that had asked you guys.
Well, wouldn't that be nice? We could get some development in this city. Let's not cry about that.
No.
And I apologize for not providing a memo, but I didn't know about this until, I didn't know about this until a packet came out, or else I'd have put a memo in the packet.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Doesn't that just eliminate then that reasoning that if we don't see potential for future growth, to vacate? I mean, I guess I'm, it's getting all of the facts now. I mean, now I'm seeing the bigger picture. Now I see that there's, there's a reason why we wouldn't wanna vacate this. So it kind of defeats the reasoning that the attorney is telling us at this point as to why we would vacate it then. If there's potential development that could happen, why would you take that opportunity away from the city for that to happen?
And that's the motion on the floor.
But I think it's city use, I think is what, city would have no further.
Understand, that somebody would be able to develop it in somewhere that would need access and gain access via 24th Street.
Other discussion? Okay, the motion on the floor is to deny the request. And Chip, you were second?
Okay, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All same sign?
Aye.
Okay, now we have a public hearing for the final reading of the proposed ordinance number 1421, an ordinance amending section 101515 of Brainerd City Code related to granting or denial of permits. We'll open this public hearing at 9:04. Is anybody here to talk about the proposed ordinance relating to the granting or denial of permits? Anybody here for the hearing on the denial or granting of permits? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing at 9:04.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Move to hold the final reading of proposed ordinance number 1421.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Move to adopt ordinance number 1421 by Roco.
Second.
Other discussion? Roco. Coe?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Orkinagin?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Okay, 10C, we tabled that from the last meeting. I guess, at this point, we can't bring forward the motion that we had last time.
What is the motion?
There is no motion right now.
I didn't think so.
But there was a motion at our last meeting, we tabled it. And I've since found through the Sturgis rules that once you go on to the next meeting, that motion dies. So right now, we have, we have a discussion, which we received a memo from the person who had wanted this discussion. And this can just be a, not even information only. It does not require, does not require action. We did not, did not follow through at our last meeting. Does anybody wanna say anything on it?
I would, I suppose I need to say something being as I was the instigator.
It's up to you.
I've heard a lot of incoming information regarding home estate. And one of the things that really struck me was the comment that quite possibly, probably, most of the community is not aware of circumstances, not aware of history, not aware of a lot of things. And so therefore, it's unfair, if you will, to propose something that people aren't aware of why it's important, why it would make a difference. And so that's why I, that's why I sent the memo saying, let's just pull it off the table so as to not be distracted with this. And I'll just take it on over the course of the next two. Help people understand what happened and why that makes a difference for us as a community and why we should reconsider it again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any other comments?
I just wanna thank Chip for bringing it forward in this quick discussion. They always are open for all discussion. Thank you for it.
Okay, new business. A request to discuss scheduling council workshop. Think that came from your subcommittee?
No, it was just Chip and me.
Oh, okay. Good thing it wasn't Chip and me, 'cause then it'd be Chip and Dale.
Yeah, right, Chip.
You're dancing.
Yeah, basically, we wondered why we can't get together and have conversation, not make any official decisions or have you, but just have a conversation in a not here.
Yes. I think, I think that's a question, well, go ahead.
We weren't considering anything that would not be open to the public.
Right.
We're well aware that the open meeting law would cover all of this.
Exactly.
But we, Chip and I had a little chit chat one day, which we cleared to be sure we weren't violating the open meeting law. And it seems that we shared a frustration that the council meetings are almost always so packed with things that we have to take care of. And we're all so shy and quiet that there's never much discussion. Sorry, that there's so much discussion that the meetings get long. And other things that you might like to hash out, or that you might not necessarily want to hash out at the time the subject is on the table, but would like to have the opportunity to in a, in a less pressing atmosphere, possible. And we thought there's so many things that would be so good to just sit together as a group, with the press, but that we, I don't even know if you'd call it a workshop. Just a discussion, and you could lay out, maybe you'd wanna have one at a time, lay out what their thoughts were and wanted to take a meeting to talk about it. Not have to make a decision, just discuss. And then when there would be a consensus, that's just something that you turn back to the council, we do that. But we thought that it would improve the other council members with each other. Begin to have more of a feeling that there might be many things that are really important to the community. Particularly things of development, economic opportunities, et cetera, that are only discussed here when there's a specific item on the agenda. But there might be a lot more that could be discussed.
So what you're proposing is kind of like the city council doing eggs and issue type?
Among themselves, right.
With the public.
Exactly. Also.
Kelly?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Neither I almost always vote against extra meetings. And maybe I should explain why, 'cause this is brought up as an agenda item. And that's that if you can't discuss it at a regular council meeting, maybe you shouldn't. And, and, and meaning that we're here to discuss issues, come to solutions, conclusions, and implement them. Social hour, it is not necessarily what I feel I was elected here to do. Now, if you lay the guidelines out with an agenda, a timeframe, and whether we're gonna make motions or not, or whether we're just gonna chit chat. I mean, I have to be truthful, sometimes the chit chat part of things gets a little long for me at these things. Because if we're not making decisions, what are we doing? Stand up on a soapbox up front and see who listens. And I don't mean to be crass, but everybody has something to say. And sometimes, if you think other people wanna listen, go find out. And I'm not meaning to deny that this isn't a good idea. I just think there should be some guidelines rather than just social. If it's agenda items that we don't have time for, lay it out on an agenda and we should have another meeting. Happens all the time in safety policy work, 'cause they get busy. Of course, in finance, we're a little quicker. But.
That's because.
But I, anyway, that's my point, is if there's a point to this, I think we should do it. And do it within a timely manner with a ultimate goal or conclusion in mind. And that's my point. And if there isn't such a thing, why do it?
My question would be public perception on that, you know. And if you feel that the public's gonna be bothered by it, then you should be bothered by it, was always my. But I would want the legal opinion of this too, you know, what can help, happen outside the realm of, you know, our public meetings.
It sounds to me like this would be a public meeting.
So you would adjourn to them?
Unless you put it in the paper.
I didn't hear that, I didn't hear that we're adjourning to them, I just.
You could adjourn to it, or put a public notice in.
Now the word could is the word I would ask than the legal opinion. Must you or can you not?
If you're going to have the whole council there and you're going to discuss items that could potentially come up for action, either at that night or future meetings, I guess my recommendation would be that the open meeting law would apply, you would notice it, treat it as an open meeting.
If I could just add quickly, I don't think either Mary nor I saw this as a social hour. It was just a little more opportunity to, especially for new council people, to get a better feel for how others are thinking, perspectives, ideas, more information. And this wouldn't necessarily have to be more than even once a month, but just to give us an opportunity to have dialogue where we sit around. There is a lot to be said about sitting around a round table and being able to look at each other and have conversation knowing that it's not about making a decision at that point. It's simply about we're taking on more information, perspective, sharing ideas, sharing thoughts. Because otherwise, the only time that we're together is sitting here where we, this isn't, this is, in a way, from my perspective, just being in business for a long time, for the average person, this isn't real. I mean, yeah, it is, it's government. But it's not sitting around a table and talking about details.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. I kind of have mixed feelings on this, just speaking personally, I like the idea. My mixed feeling is when I can't make a meeting, or when I can't be there because of other things, I feel horrible about it. It's probably a German in me. You know, and it's like, I, and I know there wouldn't be like added pressure for me to appear there, but if there's like a council-esque meeting and I can't make it.
Skype.
Do that while I'm at the debate round. But that'd be my misgiving. I mean, if it's something where, okay, it's every month we have this meeting, you can make it, you can't make it. You know, it'd be great if I could, but I, you know.
A third council.
Yeah.
All right. Any comments? That was a good discussion.
I think Throwing County does this, is they have their third, they meet three times a month. And their fourth meeting is just a set workshop. Itasca County does it, the city of Minnetoka does it. It's not uncommon to have a less formal setting. The guidelines are that there is no action taken.
Right.
And I think one of the things, when Chip explained to me, he talked about the fact that you could sit around the table, not, and be able to see each other, not talk to the chairs. Luckily tonight, we've got some good chairs. And when school's in session, we seem to have a lot more people here. But normally, it's just you guys talking to yourselves.
Kind of it too, talking to ourselves. It's kind of how we feel.
I never wanted to tell you that.
You know, there's a good chance that most, a lot of that time, we still would be talking to ourselves. But it's just, and you know, the point about missing, if we did have these meetings and you were not able to make even a few of them, this is, still remains the official council meeting. And the other ones, if you can show up, great, and if you can't, well, yeah, 'cause I certainly don't.
I'd try my best, I could guarantee I wouldn't feel badly. But you know, you know what I mean, though.
Well, we're all Northern Europeans here, we all have that, share that same responsibility.
Putting together what Chip and Mary have and Kelly. I think it makes sense to have a meeting maybe once a month. But we have an agenda item, whether it's bringing in a staff person to talk about something specific, or, you know, we talk about something that, well, one of the things that we did last year was we talked about our long-term proposals. You know, things that we don't normally talk about here, but we can bring forth. And as long as we have a, an agenda that we notice and set up a time, I think that, for me, that's an idea that makes sense.
And I think that's where a lot of this thought came from, is we always talk about immediate. We're always just either putting out fires or we're, you know, half a step ahead of what's going on. The, what we really need is visioning time when we can get together and think about where we wanna be five or 10 years from now. What do we want our community to look like? And granted, we do that visioning session once a year, but it's kind of a, even that is kind of crowned, and if we could spread that out a little more.
More conversation than, than the format.
One of the things that was related specifically, you talked about having, holding the meeting downstairs in the conference room too, at the round table, but still open. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, I don't trust that that was related.
So not at the last turn then?
Oh, sorry.
Well, I wouldn't go that far.
I agree, though, there would need to be an agenda, I would think there's still one. Maybe limited to one item. And I think council people should be the ones to determine what those items are. You may have an item that you just wished you could lay on the table and have talked about. That's why it should be open to each, not too long, maybe one. Oh, don't, oh, honestly, Gary. Well, I mean, you know, not too long of an agenda. An hour maybe.
Do you guys want action tonight, or do you want?
What do you think?
I would just, I guess all I was looking for was more people than not willing to say, yeah, let's give it a try and see how it works.
So should we have, we should have a motion then?
I would make a motion that we would have a workshop meeting to introduce us to the. I would make a motion that we would have a workshop meeting to introduce us to the, to the concept and see what it's like.
Okay, and do we want to set a...
Why not?
Like, a third?
Well, don't set a date tonight. I have too many meetings on my schedule.
Yeah, and then until we get past the budget, we have more.
Yeah, because I'm just busy with...
The motion on the table is to have, I like to call it a workshop, but you don't want to call it a formal workshop, that we would meet and have further discussion with no action. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Am I too late to ask a question? Is staff supposed to be at this meeting?
Well, not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
It's by invite only.
Right, by invite only.
However, they are obviously...
Right, I think that's what I was expressed, I was told administrator when he's saying...
Right. They are obviously part of the public, so they're welcome to come and...
Okay, number 11, Bean, which is what we, thing that we added, which is a committee for SIP and lost. And SIP stands for...
Statewide Health Improvement Plan?
Huh?
Are we talking about ship?
No, 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 no. Capital Improvement Plan.
I'm sorry.
And then lost is the local...
Option Sales Tax.
Extension.
Extension. So, the request is to put together a subcommittee of the council to talk about how, how we're going to go about informing the public. I want to ask if Chip would be interested in that, simply because of your expertise and, and ads, and not that that necessarily is going to be part of it, but the idea of how to get people's attention. You have to think about that, and we should have somebody from the Personnel and Finance Committee.
President?
Yes.
And I'm going to volunteer, and we'll see where it goes. One is, I'm on the Airport Commission, which $8 million is going to directly affect, that we're working with on this, on, with both cities. And then I'm also on the Brainerd Public Utility Commission, which is the sewage treatment plant, and with both commissions, lost is, you know, part of that, and I would like to be informed so I can at least work with the committees that I'm on, too.
Okay. Is there anybody over aside that arm wrestling?
I, I'd like to do it. I'm, you know, just time commitments worry me a little bit.
Give it a whirl.
It'll be over by November 4th.
There we go. Got me, I guess. Okay.
Chip, do you mind if I appoint him, or do you want it?
Oh, I'm willing to, to help in the background. I do know how to get the attention, obviously.
You and Chip. Chip? Okay, so we have Chip, Mary, and Dave. Okay. Yes.
I was trying to make a suggestion, and you could still do it if you chose, that the attorney would be asked to put together perhaps three or four scenarios of what might be appropriate. This is actually a rather simple matter. And, you know, when I read about it in my own mind, I, I thought was, let's make together the propaganda, and I'm quite certain that's what most of the public don't think it is.
Some of the public.
I think most of the public. Anyway, I thought, you know, it's important in any, any kind of publicity, that you do abide by the parameters of the law, which are out there. And, and my view that it would also be, use this view adjective, maybe use no adjective. It should simply be, I guess, hardened, and it should not involve, as I say, the propaganda, which is what I think you're going to hear being called anyway. But I think the better thing would be if the attorney could at least give two or three or four scenarios wording that would be of help. So whether you do it or not is your option, but I think a lot rests on the wording that's used.
Well, Pat will be the lead on the committee, and he'll be in contact with the attorney, so...
And actually, we'd be more in contact with our bond counsel, that we've already been communicating with them, but they're the ones who specialize in that. Eric can always come.
Did you throw me under the bus because you wanted to be on the committee?
No way.
Oh, because you can be on the committee.
No way.
Okay. I was wondering why you threw me under the bus.
I didn't mean to, I'm sorry.
You know, it almost sounds like SBNW should take this.
Is there a motion to approve that subcommittee?
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, number 12, from the Planning Commission, the fence height and fence appearance, appearance for 801 Lake Street. Want to take that, Mark?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I will give a brief description of what is happening, or what the Planning Commission has recommended. I'm sure that, once I get through with my short presentation, there'll probably be questions, because this is somewhat complicated. In your packet, you received the recommendation from the Planning Commission. What the Planning Commission has recommended is receivers who live at 801 Lake Street be permitted to have a six-and-a-half-foot-tall fence on their property up to the property line. And you, in your packet, there's some diagrams that illustrate where the fence is and its relationship to where the property line is. And one of the unique situations here is that Lake Street has a 40-foot, or an 80-foot right-of-way. And that means 40 feet from the center of Lake Street Inn is where the property line is. And this property has quite a bit of its, it's, the property line is well back from the curb. So I provided a diagram to illustrate how much fence is on the private property. There's more fence on the private property along the driveway than there is along the west line on, with the Bemens who own property to the west. And the Planning Commission has recommended that all that new fence that's on their property be allowed to remain. And I think they did that unanimously. There's another aspect of this proposal that goes beyond what the Planning Commission can recommend, and that is, the property owner, the receivers, actually constructed a great, a ma, a great percentage of that fence in the public right-of-way. And you can see that in the diagrams, how much fence is actually put in the right-of-way. In addition to the variance that's being asked for, they're requesting the council to grant the ability to keep that fence in the public right-of-way, all at the height that they've built it. A couple of things, updates for you on this. Part of this request had to do with the appearance of the fence on the west property line. They constructed the fence with the good side facing in. Well, since the Planning Commission meeting, and I have photos that were submitted by Mr. Seaver, he has corrected that, so that is no longer an issue. It's a moot point. The appearance is no longer, uh, on the west line is an issue. That can be disregarded. And it's really not germane to the variance, but just to put everybody's mind at ease, on the west line, there was a, he, he, the fence was constructed to have a gate on it, and it shows up in the, in, on the photograph in the packet. That's been corrected, so there's not going to be a gate at that location. That's, has nothing to do with the variance, it just has to do with the relationship between the neighbors. So, with that said, you have the Planning Commission's recommendation. If it's denied, you want me to go into the, what happens if it's denied, or do you, or do you want, that's all you want at this point?
Please, one.
Yes, would you go on and tell us what will happen if denied?
Okay. If, if the city council overturns the Planning Commission recommendation and says, nope, six-and-a-half-foot fence is not permitted, the owner can have a fence there, but it would have to be reduced down to four feet on private property. That also then still doesn't, you still have to act on the public right-of-way, and I would presume that if you wanted to leave the fence in the right-of-way, you'd say it has to be reduced down to four feet, to, for everything to, to match. So, anything between the house and the street property line, a fence cannot be over four feet tall. So, that in a nutshell is the situation, and there's probably questions, and I'll try to answer them.
Go ahead, Mary.
I read this a couple of times, and I believe there needs to be an agreement between two property owners if the fence is on the property line, which this is. And apparently, the applicant said there was an agreement. Apparently, it was not in writing. Does our ordinance does not specify, then an agreement would have to be in writing?
I think it does. I, I have to go back and, and grab the ordinance, and I can do that. And that's simply, that's between the two property owners.
I, I understand that, but if they agree or disagree, shouldn't it be in writing?
Yes.
And it isn't?
I don't have one.
I don't believe it is.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything in writing. I understand the applicant said that he had talked with the neighbor, and the neighbor had agreed, and I have no way of knowing, but if, if it isn't in writing, you know, does it exist? So that was my first question. And the second one, we have standards about a fence. Are they allowed to be, so there's no light between them, just a board fence?
Complete privacy, yes.
We allow that?
Yes.
And then, is the dark part on the photo old fencing?
Yes, that has been there.
Okay, that, that's, because I drove by it, also looked at it quite a bit. And I understood that the neighbor had a number of objections?
There was a letter in the packet from Borden Stein Howard Knutson Law Firm that outlines the objections from the Bemens who own the property to the west, or to the east.
And part of those had to do with no permission being given, at least that's...
Obviously, yes.
That's what they're, but it's on the property line. Who is responsible for keeping it clean? On the part that it would be on the neighbor's property, who has to take care of it?
Presumably, that would be where the agreement comes into place.
But without such an agreement, the neighbor would have to take care of it, no matter what's there.
Depends on what, it's up to the property owners to decide how it's going to happen. If the property owner doesn't want to, that puts up the fence, doesn't want to maintain the outside of the fence, I guess that's their prerogative, and they can get into a dispute with their neighbor.
I, I, you know, we've done some of this before. We have a lot of fences that have been built on a, on a city right-of-way to remain. We've done that. I'm not saying it's a good idea, but precedence has been, so I think we're, I think we probably have to hold on to it. But the concern I have, and as I say, drove by it a few times, the apartment building behind, the one that is, the neighbor, that property owner, is subject to rental property. We have all sorts of codes and such that require rental property owners to do X, Y, and Z to attempt to keep their property there. And we do get complaints from the public from that, about rental properties that they feel have not been. And so the thought occurred to me, are we making it, because it's not attractive? If you went, if you do, oh, then look, it's not at all. Are we in a way sending a message that because this abuts a rental property, we don't care what it looks like? And yet, on the other hand, we're saying to rental property owners, you keep your property. I mean, I don't know if I'm saying this very well, but when I drove by there, I thought, you know, that was my property, it would be there. And are we saying because it's rental, it doesn't matter? But on the other hand, renter, owner of this property, you better keep it up. Are we sending a message that... And I realize that I'm, I'm not being...
All right, Karen. Put me on the list.
Thank you. The fence that's been there, you don't have an age on it? That's what's my question, the older fence, how long it's been there? Obviously, it's grandfathered.
Yes, that's what in my, in my position...
So somebody was going to add on to it, obviously, they would just take right off. So there must have been an agreement in place way back. So to me, it's already grandfathered. All they're doing is adding on. But it's grandfathered, you can't go after an agreement on that.
Correct.
You know, so it's just, I mean, they're going to put a jog in a fence. I listened to, you know, the planning and zoning TV, I watched it on TV, the Seavards, that their name, they were here, they described some concerns that they had, why they went with the size fence. And one was, you know, security, privacy, and a whole bunch of other issues. I don't know if that same language can be brought, that they said there can be brought here, but they had people come into their home from the apartment complex, and they had all, so a lot of it was just, hey, you know, we got a beautiful home, $250,000 home right here, and we just kind of want to protect it from, you know, people looking in and, and all the things that they mentioned that had happened to them. And I want the public to know that.
That's precisely the recommendate, why the Planning Commission recommended approval was, because of the security and the, and the, the peace of mind for the property owners.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, um, I just need to clarify the, the motion in the Planning Commission, because I, I read it, and it says, and, and just clarified what you said. It says, second, made by Pritchett, second by Norwood, reking, recommending the approval of a six-and-a-half-foot fence. And I apologize, I thought you just said a four-foot.
If, if it's de...
If it's, okay, right.
All that's permitted is the four-foot.
So what Planning Commission is allowing the six-and-a-half?
Recommending, yes.
Recommending the allowing.
On private property.
On private property only. Is that, is that, is that, is the new and the old part that Mr. Sheeter just mentioned, is, is that, where those two come together? Is that the property line? Is, or does that just happen to be?
Well, yeah, the old and the new is along the east property line running north and south.
I understand that.
Okay.
It doesn't just happen to be that they only added on to the right-of-way, is it? Let me... I don't believe so.
No.
Wouldn't that, no.
Yeah, this 18-foot-six is all new.
And that's...
And that's, he's saying is 18-foot-six.
18-foot-six. So they added, what they added on, the new part, happens to be exactly from the corner of the property line on to the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Oh, okay. Hold it, Mark. This is 23 and 18-six.
On the west, on the east property line, there's less new fence on private property than there is on the driveway side.
Okay.
Because the old fence extends farther out from the front of the house.
Got it.
So it's only like about six feet of new fence on the east property line was on private property, and as I heard the administrator mention, it's something like, um, everything back of 18-six, so that must be about 12 feet, or 16, about 20 feet, maybe.
My, my question is whoever put the original, or my statement is, it appears whoever put the original fence up at least maintained it on their property. It appears.
I did.
Okay. Okay, so, so, and I, I just wanted to clarify, clarify those, those things. So the new, the new fence, everything on the right-of-way is all new.
Correct. Right on.
Got it. And the Planning Commission has recommended that all go down.
No.
It says up to the property line.
Right. Because that's the only jurisdiction they have.
Right.
They don't have jurisdiction on the right-of-way.
Exactly.
That's your decision. They're acting, they're saying, okay, we'll allow it up to the property line at six-and-a-half feet. If you want to allow it up the right-of-way at six-and-a-half feet, that's your call.
Yeah, another, one quick question. The, it must be Lake Street? The, in front of his house, or one, I don't know, on the, on the driveway side of the residence, there is a split-rail fence and some shrubbery?
Yep.
That's all in the road right-of-way?
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that that all was, too, as I do the eyesight down the line. Okay.
So are we looking for two motions? We're looking for two motions. One is to accept the Planning Commission's... One is to accept the planning commands or deny their recommendation and then another for the right of way?
You can do it in one as long as it's clear that there's two parts to it, or you can do it in separate, it's your choice.
I can clarify. Dale just asked me a question about the old split rail fence that Commissioner Matten just brought up, council member Matten brought up. That's in the right of way and he mentioned that it was grandfathered in, but technically because it's not on their property, it's not grandfathered in. They can't, can't grandfather on somebody else's property.
Right. And rightly or wrongly, when we realized that that was on the right of way, I would talk to the city engineer and I said, look, we have a split rail fence in the right of way. Are we going to make an issue of this with the council? And we felt that it wasn't creating a safety issue. It's open, it's been there for forty years, however long it's been there. We did not recommend it come out. If you want, if you feel it needs to come out, that's your prerogative.
It's very nice looking, it's very good looking, the rail fence. It's very, and it's very good.
No, I just, I took a picture on my phone. May I say one quick thing? It, it was only just for clarification and I think the road right of way on the, the fence issue, I think that was more of a safety concern for planning and zoning. Due to the height and the, and how close it is in the road right of way, for those individuals coming in and out of the apartment building driveway, it was a, it was an obstruction of view from oncoming traffic. And that's why, yeah, I mean, we weren't going to make a, you know, suggestions at this point because it is in the road right of way. We didn't have that right to, but that was a concern that was brought up. Just for clarifying. Yep.
Anybody have any other question?
If I can.
Go ahead, make a motion when you're ready.
I just want to clarify with the city attorney. Can the city council authorize someone else to build on this city right of way? Or is that not a, what I'm going to call a license agreement? There's some legal form that would allow, but right now, I mean, we, I don't think we could allow the fence to stay as it is without some sort of agreement. I'm not sure, that's what I'm asking.
I'm not sure about that, whether there needs to be a written agreement for it. I mean, you can do it. I've drafted those agreements before. Whether or not you need it to be in, in written form, I'm, I'm not confident in answering that right now.
Jeff?
If I can too, I'm not sure about the requirement, but we do have a number of those types of agreements in existence where we've allowed daycares or some other uses that needed to fence in, part of the right of way, we've allowed that by agreements and, and within the agreement, we've set the terms by which the fence would be removed.
I have a suggestion, but it would be just for humor and that would be a petition to vacate that spot.
Dave, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to move that, that the council approved the recommendation of the planning commission considering the six and a half foot fence on private property.
So for discussion purposes, you're saying that there can't, that new fence can't be on?
We could split that, I think that should be a separate motion, whether we decide to have them take it down, like as Mr. Sheila has suggested.
It's just talking about.
The private property and the height of fence.
Any other discussion on that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would really like to see part of that motion include a, since it's on the property line, a agreement. Maintenance, et cetera. And without it, I don't think I can support it. The fact that it wasn't there doesn't mean that it's still not a good idea. And since you've got a contested issue with the neighbor, I think it's, I mean, now's the time, now we have the opportunity to fix that problem. So I'm going to not support the motion.
But do we have the right?
I'm not forcing, I'm not saying it should be forced, I'm just saying I'm not going to support it without.
I may be wrong, but it was my understanding that the dispute between the two neighbors is a dispute between the two neighbors and not a city council issue. We are not liable, we are not involved if it's going to be just between those two. Am I correct in that? Getting a nod from the attorney?
Correct.
Because otherwise, we, we talked about that, Mr. Bevan, that was an issue that we.
Doesn't our ordinance say it has to be there? If it's on the property line? So you can't say we're not involved. You can wish we were involved, but I think you just said, our ordinance says it's got to be there. So we're involved.
But then the burden of proof is, is the property owner's responsibility, not ours.
I'll support it when they show it to me.
Well, and the only other thing that was part of our ordinance was the, that's the reason why the owner double faced it. Because it, he need, our ordinance does indicate the good side needs to be to the neighboring side. So he did double face it, but he didn't have to double face the grandfathered portion of the fence. So it may only be eight feet that we're talking about, if that's what we are talking about. As far as the rest of it being in the road right of way, and I know that's a separate issue at this point, but that, that grandfathered portion and plus this new eight feet is what you're asking for with an agreement.
We got a motion.
We have a motion, so no, sorry. So the motion is to approve what the planning commission put together, which basically is that they would have allowed a six and a half foot fence on the property line. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
I just wanted to say something. Without that written agreement between the property owners, I can't support it. I would wholly, that the city would have to be beautifully, less over the back, where the fence is. And that's what the apartment property is the back part. There is no written agreement. The ordinance says it. So in effect, we're not even abiding by our own policy. There is no written agreement. The whole issue of maintenance and such, if any of these factors are, you know, there can't be any issues. And I too feel that that's something that should, it needs to be.
Mark? Or, I guess the question I have for one of you two is, do we have any enforcement? If, if there's no agreement on that, on the, on the property line?
Well, good question because I've been talking to the city attorney about a situation in North Brainerd that is very similar to this. And, and I don't want to put words into the attorney's mouth, but the burden of proof is upon the property owner, not us.
For clarification.
Accurate?
Yes, I mean, that's a slightly different situation, but.
Okay.
But yeah. I mean, I agree with your point.
My question is, this is the back of their yard. This is the back of the, this is not side yard, this is behind the house.
Rear property line, yeah.
Yep, okay.
The one property owner says it's, correct? Oh, isn't that correct? I just want to see it.
Somebody heard, I don't know.
But the other property owner.
Well, two men say they're Jesus, one of them must be wrong.
Protesting, you're singing a protest.
It's not our issue.
Yeah, our issue.
It's not our issue.
Okay, with that being said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same side?
Aye.
Five, two. Okay, now we have to address the right of way.
Mr. President, I'd like to clarify that the fence, if you look at the diagram, just so that you're very clear, or the pictures, I should say, you'll notice that the, at the, up by the street, there's an additional, we'll call it an extra foot or so at the bottom of, of fence material. That's the standard panel. And then you've got another six, eight inches, maybe it's a foot, I don't know. Point being is the fence at the street is seven feet tall.
Oh, okay. I see they added an addition to the bottom.
Yep.
Okay. And they did that just trying to keep the?
Yep. For continuity.
Yep.
Can I make a suggestion on personal motion, Chairman?
Come up to the microphone and tell us who you are and your relationship to this.
I'm Jerry Seaver and I live at 801 Lake Street and I've lived there since 1982 before Mr. Bement even built. And since I've been there, I've never seen, well, now, Arless, but Harry even touched the hedge, that was an issue. But number two, we came to the city planning and zoning. I was allowed to put a split rail fence on that side of the driveway, twenty feet in 1983. Just, if you've got to take it down, Jerry, you'll take it down. Yeah, I did. In 2009, I took it down on South Eighth or Broadway there. I took it down when the great crew from Mora came in and did our street. They're phenomenal at, those people that did that street on South Eighth. Anyway, so I took the split rail fence down on South Eighth and, and so in visiting with Jeff and Mark, I said, hey, if at any time you want me to take that sucker down, just let me know and Donald will come. If you decide to do Lake Street, which is 262 feet long, the only thing I got over here is a six foot belonging to Mr. Bement and me. I won't get into why we want the fence, because that has already been taken care of and I thank you for that. I would like to have that fence extended eight feet on the curb where the split rail fence was for the following, one of the following reasons. I got it here somewhere. I'm glad I don't have, I'm very nervous because I got, my wife left to go with the puppies. We got two puppies, twelve week old puppies, and that's another reason for the fence, but they can't jump over it. Oh, here it is, right here.
That's a good, that's a good picture.
That extra on the right of way, I guess, that's what we got to vote on next. So that's why I want it, is so when Jack and Carter come down from Pequot or people come over, we can play a little badminton. I think I got some more pictures here somewhere. Again, I say, I, I appreciate you, I'm really sorry, I, I, I really didn't know I needed permission. I've been there, like I say, since the early eighties and, and I really try to keep my property up. I really do. And all I can say is the second reason I want to be able to play badminton and enjoy my backyard. And as it was explained to me in the early nineties, when I wanted to put a swimming pool back there for my daughters and I wanted to run for fourth ward when Martin resigned, so I could put a swimming pool in Gregory Park. And unbeknown to the city council and everyone here, there was a gentleman in this town that is now deceased that was willing to volunteer to build a pool. And all they had to do, the city, was to provide the administration and the land. Because my daughters had to go to Whipple or out here to swim. And I thought, what a great idea that, so I, but I didn't get many votes. Didn't get many votes. But anyway, I want to have it, so, uh, it sounds facetious to play badminton and that, but a man's paying me restitution for coming to my yard a year and a half ago and he was convicted. And when a gentleman, a neighbor goes to my wife's employment and says, boy, it's nice to be able to look at you now that you removed the twenty foot diseased spruce tree this spring? And he walks into my wife's employment and says it's nice to look at you without binoculars? That's creepy. You saw it on the video, my wife. So that's another reason and if, if you want a license agreement to take that sucker down off of Lake Street, it'll come down tomorrow. I didn't creep out towards the curb, I'm right eight feet. And, and, and that's the reason I, I want to have it up there. I would never put an obstruction like that on the corner. In fact, I helped David Hyde pull out the junipers across the street because they were so high on the corner. There were, were, what's his name, from the sheriff's department owned that house across the street from me. There's only, it's, it's not a big street and it's, but I'd sure like to have you vote, the fact that I got nine hundred and eighty-two dollars invested in that little extension out there. And I'd hate to have to take it down because then I'd have to go get G Man's twenty volt lithium drill to take it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion or are we ready to make a motion?
I'd like to find that there's two great planning commissioners off to the right down there that heard this.
We didn't discuss this part because this is totally city council. The right of way was not in our jurisdiction, so we focused on what, so this is new to us too, basically.
If, Mr. Chair, if the council were to approve leaving, would the motion be that simple?
Yeah.
And to enter into appropriate agreement that we have with other, we do have others, I'm well aware of other fences that are encroached on the right of way. And they have been allowed, but with caveats that if the city has to go in there for any reason, the city can do that, property owner remove the fence, et cetera. Is that right? Is that?
Probably true, yes.
I would make that motion, that it be allowed with the appropriate agreement to be put together by the engineer and the planner and.
The attorney.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, no, I didn't hear the motion.
Okay. Mary made the motion to approve the, the fence as it is on to the right of way.
With the appropriate agreement that we have with other property owners.
Is there a second?
I'm going to second this.
Okay. Now we got discussion, Pat.
When you said the appropriate agreement, I'm assuming you're asking that the city attorney draft it up and that the applicant would be responsible for that payment at that time also?
Whatever has been done, I'm thinking most recently of the one, I believe it was the Bennetts.
And the Trail.
Right. And I'm not certain how that agreement, who did it, or if there was a cost. Did you do it?
I think Tom did it.
Tom did it. But if there is a cost, I would say yes, that would be fair.
Where is it? I beat you, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm going to support this for one reason, there's an eighty foot right of way and most right of ways are sixty-six. So there is plenty of room for the city to get some utilities. But I would only support it if this also would include the utility companies other than the city, that, you know, let's say, some, somebody's got to go through that area. That's why we have those areas and it becomes real costly. And I explained this to Mark. I'm really bothered when people, and I'm, I'm going to be guilty of this, I put a sprinkling system in the boulevard. A utility company comes through and they see that, actually they charge, you know, more to have that done and some of that cost gets passed off to the rest of the people in town. So if there's utility work done, I don't like to see anything in a boulevard that's going to add extra expense for the utility companies because that cost gets passed on. So in this case, I don't see that happening and I'm going to support it.
I have, I have one concern, I wanted to second this so we could discuss it, is it has been brought up that does block the visibility. And, you know, I'm kind of looking at, you know, possibility of maybe amending it so he pulls it back the one section which appears to be six feet. And at least discuss that and then, and then go from there. Okay.
I think that still gives him at least most of what he's looking for.
I would second that amendment.
Okay. So if I'm, if I'm clear, the six foot, you're talking about the?
Pulling it back six foot from the street.
I think there's some issue here.
Are we, I want to clarify the actual motion in the second and then was there a modification of the original motion or was there?
My thought was I could just modify it, the project, calling it an amendment, but I'll be guided by whatever you do.
And I would be, I'd rather do that amendment.
I'd rather do it, it's much cleaner.
Yeah. Mary modified it, so the, the fence would go back.
Pulled back at least six feet.
Feet.
Or six.
And it will stay at the seven foot.
And that's for the visibility purposes, as you may, all that safety.
Mark? For clarification, I'm, I'm presuming you're meaning that he just angled the corner?
Nope. Pull it back six.
The whole fence in six feet?
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're doing.
Yeah.
I see it.
All the back six. Hold it back six.
You have to, you'll have to come up, you have to come up.
There's already a motion in a second though, so.
Oh, that's right, we can't, oh.
Yeah. Alongst, excuse me, alongside that old portion of the fence on the east side, from there to the corner of the new fence was a fifteen-foot hedge. A huge ugly hedge that had been there since I, before I got, it may not always in place. The point is that was more obstruction with kids riding their bicycles and everything else than the fence. Because it was never main, it was maintained by me, you know. So I just want you to know that, and if you look, Harry hasn't had people in those garages in five years. Thank you.
Would angling the corner do it, this lady? It is a lot of extra work and time and fence and the whole thing. Would angling the corner, in your view, take care of the, there is a visibility issue. There is, in my mind, it wasn't huge because there's a lot worse ones in Brainerd, I guarantee. Which you drive around, but I understand, but angling the corner, you think?
This, we're talking about?
Yes.
I think that was.
Oh, it's on the other side.
How, how far is this? What's the length from his driveway to the Bemets driveway? Along Lake Street, how far is that actual? And?
Eight feet, six to eight feet.
Nope, it's further than that.
From the driveway to the fence.
No, it's further than that.
It's the width of the badminton.
I'm looking at from here to here. Because if you angle it, you've got a funny looking fence. I mean, you have, that's more obtrusive, in my opinion, than just moving it back six feet.
But looking at this, there's six, there's seven foot six inches from the end of the fence toward the street is basically, right?
Yep.
If you're pulling out there and looking.
Well, it's, like I said, you know, when I heard one of the, uh, planning and zoning people tell me that hit or nearly hit a vehicle when they were pulling out as they were viewing it, it, it's cause for concern, so.
It did hit the bolt is what I heard on that.
I went around to the round.
I've got six people, uh, leaving my house, back where I live, my driveway right in, yeah. That's steep final berth, I think.
You know, to be honest, I'd be happy with it in any of those three, three ways. You know, I, I personally think, you know, it, it's a concern, but seven foot six? If you've got a hood that's longer than seven foot six, so you can't see, that might, that's an issue. Angling it, I'd be okay with that and pulling it back, I'd be okay with that.
Well, maybe the motion could be amended once more and say that what the, uh, property owner and the planning and engineering staff would put up, come up with as an appropriate safety oriented agreement? Or amend my motion again?
I accept.
Chip?
I'm wondering if somebody could help me, um, erase the little thing that's going around in my brain that says it's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission? Somebody help me?
You can't. We know what you say.
Is that's what's happening here? Or am I missing something?
I'm not so sure. You know, I, I think part of the problem is the fact that, as Gary mentioned, it's a wider street, you know, than normal. And so, you know, persons, even though I've lived there a long time, may, may not know exactly where the proxy line is.
But if you were going to build a brand new fence and invest that kind of money into it, would you not think, maybe I should make sure that, you know, ordinances haven't changed and I don't need a building permit to do that?
The petitioner said he's met with both our planner and our engineer. We do have a site plan requirement for fencing. I'm sure our engineer and our planner wouldn't not tell the person that, right? Wouldn't they?
Tell them what?
You think you need a site plan for a fence?
Yes, always.
And he met with you guys, per his words right here, five minutes ago.
Well, he.
As the fact.
After the fact, yeah.
Ah, okay, because no permit was, was requested. So now I'm going to stick with the six foot.
Okay, so where do we want to go? We have a motion and we have a second. And you're okay with keeping it this?
After they take a look at, make sure that's safe.
Okay.
Whatever adjustments need to be made according to planner and the engineer in order that safety concerns are met.
They're going to come back to us, then?
I would be satisfied with their decision.
Which could be just keeping it where it is. Okay, so before we get this amended again.
A motion on the floor as well.
The motion on the floor is to have the planning commission and/or the engineer meet with the property owner. Planner, okay, I'm sorry. Planner and the, and/or the engineer to look at this as a safety, potential safety concern and make the appropriate adjustments, whether it be to shorten it up six feet with an angle or keep it as.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. All same side?
Aye.
Motion is six one.
Five two.
Five two, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, five two.
Sheer?
No. Okay, number thirteen. Public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the intention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. Is there anybody here for public forum? He beat you out.
Well, council members this evening, I hope I'm not out of order because it does call for citizens, so you may be wondering what a guy that lives down by Fort Ripley is doing at the council meeting. I wanted to take the opportunity this evening to introduce myself. I'm the new school superintendent, Dr. Clinton Willard. And one of my colleagues who was here earlier this evening was unable to stay because there was a little staffing issue that she needed to attend to. But I wanted to introduce myself and extend a hand that, um, much like you, we go through the, the challenges of setting levees, making tough decisions. But as we do so, we do it in, in an intent and a purpose of collaboration and cooperation. And, and I just wanted to let you know that we've already started to extend a hand and started to meet with, uh, city administrations, city staff members with the intent that through the five points partnership, um, we're working to renew that. And we just, uh, wanted to extend a hand as well that on behalf of the school district, we just look forward to working with the council, with council members, with administration as we go forward. So, um, again, like I said, I hope I'm not order, out of order this evening, but certainly, uh, certainly do appreciate all the tough issues that you've grappled with this evening and, and know that we share your, uh, concerns about where the city of Brainerd is going. So, um, certainly excited to be here this evening and, uh, glad to meet each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I'm late for work tomorrow, you'll know.
Dearly noted, duly noted.
I bet you're glad we're not in school.
Mr. Mayor.
And Doctor, uh, I have been in contact with your, uh, your assistant secretary, I believe, in trying to set up a meeting with our administrator or police, uh, chief of police. And, uh, so far we are still trying to get that in there.
Perfect.
That we have.
Yeah.
So I apologize that we haven't gone back to you, but we're, everybody's going sixteen miles an hour. And, uh, but we do look forward to meeting you personally on one-on-one.
Super.
Have you come to city hall and meeting with you?
Excellent.
But welcome to Brainerd.
Well, thank you.
And your new position and I know you do well.
Yeah, well, really excited, um, and, and, uh, kind of kid with our school board a little bit. It was kind of a cash deal for them because we'll bring two kids with me. One's a sophomore and then I have a daughter that's, uh, my son's a sophomore, my daughter's a seventh grader and, um, my wife is real excited to be here as well, so we're, uh, we're working on making this home, so. Um, I came from Marshall, Minnesota. I was school superintendent for the last ten years in, uh, in the Marshall Public Schools. Yeah, yeah, beautiful community as well, absolutely, absolutely. But again, like I said, looking forward to working with the council and, and, uh, the ongoing progress of the, of the entire Brainerd Lakes area. So thank you and great meeting. I'm going to sneak out the door so I can go tuck my kids in. Have a good night.
What do you mean David Pernod? You all know who I am, I guess. I want to say respect everybody on the council, especially the people on the planning commission. But I feel there's a little remiss, uh, with regards to this downtown streetscape. I asked to address the council in my letter and I wasn't given that opportunity. When Dale asked if there was any discussion, a motion was made and seconded before I even had a chance to speak. And I represent, um, the Downtown Building Owners Association, which has given me letters for approximately sixty-five percent of the owners of the buildings. And if so, I'd like to be able to address that before this, maybe reopen that one.
If it's been on the agenda, we have to have it.
That's why I'm asking if we can, because I have all these people and I spend a lot of time with them. And I feel it's important everybody knows what they said.
I, I guess I'd have to say we can't do it tonight, but is it something you want to put on your?
Well, there's a public hearing on the very issue.
There is. The twentieth of October, there's a public hearing.
That's the public hearing we set.
Where the information that you passed out.
My understanding was that you had only agreed to a hundred percent on this in the public hearing was only on the snow.
No, it's on the street.
Okay, so we can bring it up again at that point?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave, and thanks for hanging in there that long.
Is there anybody else here for public hearings? Public forum. Okay, hearing done, I'll close the public forum at ten twelve. Okay, uh, reports, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the things I had an opportunity to, uh, to attend last Sunday was the, they had an early showing of the Hart remodeling, remodeled building out at, uh, on Delwood Drive there. And I don't know if anybody's been out there to see it, but what a beautiful, beautiful addition that is. Don Hannah was there and I'm sure he was doing it, all of the nice, nice new facilities. But there was, uh, many people who contributed for, uh, that remodeling. But I mean, it is, it's pristine and it is well designed and, uh, it's actually just a beautiful building for Hart. And, uh, I'm, I'm know they can always use more monies and funds and stuff like that, but it, um, it really is, if you get a chance, you should really stop out there and look at it. I was fortunate, in fact, at the time we were out there, there was no dogs barking, there were no cats meowing. But they hadn't moved them in yet. But no, it, it, it really is a wonderful addition to, compared to, and I'd been out there many times before when it, it did need overhauling. So with that, um, like I say, our police chief is, he's here so he can mention the fact that school has started and please drive safely. They, people are, I, I drive down College Drive and I go right at thirty miles an hour because that's what the street sign says, you know. And it doesn't matter what lane you're in, people will pass you like, well, it's, it must be, uh, must be on three seventy-one now. So for those who drive, drive carefully.
Thank you.
Are you calling out the chief of police on that or?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, he, he's not always here, so I just kind of like to bring it up even though as a reminder, because he, sometimes he doesn't always have a report except for.
The mayor on the front.
City attorney? City administrator? I took here my memo, I don't. City engineer?
Uh, just a couple items, Mr. President. Uh, first, the Garfield School project. A lot of, uh, working back to the curbs was completed last week. Got all the class five in or most of the class five in. We're still waiting for a couple of soft spots in a couple of the corners and along some of the curb lines to set up. But, uh, we're very hopeful that that's going to set up soon and be able to get that paved and, and wrap that project up. The, uh, this past couple of weeks, we've been working on our, in fact, we started about a month ago. But, uh, our road salt order for this winter is getting to be a little bit problematic. Last year, we bought two hundred and fifty tons from North American Salt and, um, this year, uh, when they quoted us, they would only quote us half of that, uh, amount. Apparently there's quite a salt shortage in this part of the country, so, um, we're, we're going to try to get our full two hundred and fifty tons, but the price, due to the shortage, the price has gone up from seventy-seven dollars a ton to a hundred and two dollars a ton. And, uh, we're hoping that, well, we'll just get as much as we can. But, um, if we're at a hundred and twenty-five tons, we're going to have to use it very sparingly this, this winter. But, um, again, we're, we're trying to find some additional sources if we can. We've contacted a few other suppliers, they won't even quote us because we didn't buy from them last year. So it's, uh, might be a challenge to get salt this year. End of report.
Thank you. City planner?
Mr. President, thank you. I have a few items to report on. We are continuing to work with the Brainerd Industrial Center and, uh, working with them through the application process for their interim use permit. They have been interested in wanting to have some special meetings. We are getting to the point where we're almost ready to have a complete application, but trying to schedule a special meeting isn't going to save them much time from, save them much time in comparison to when the regular meeting of the planning commission is in October. So, um, I'm talking to chairman of the planning commission and, and we're checking it out and see if there were going to be a special meeting. But suffice to say, we're getting close to having a complete application from them to move forward with the I O P, I U P application. And you're adjourning later tonight and I just want to mention then that, uh, I'm sure that you'll mention it too. There, there's a ribbon cutting for the, um, first dedicated bike lane in the city of Brainerd on Willow Street. That'll be at five thirty PM, um, by the, uh, St. Andrews Church. The public is invited, uh, certainly welcome to attend and be a part of that, uh, first ever, uh, bike lane in the city of Brainerd and, and celebrate the success of making that happen. You, earlier tonight, had some discussion about the local option sales tax and the information dissemination about that. Don't forget, we have the newsletter. Uh, we'll have a newsletter going out in October. So that's a vehicle also to use for, um, getting the information out again on the local option sales tax info, uh, information. With regard to that, we have set up on the city's homepage, um, an opportunity for residents to sign up for the city newsletter, to have it, uh, sent email to them directly. We're going to see how that works, see how that, the public responds to that. Rather than going to the homepage and, and looking at it there, it would be sent an email blast to everybody that signs up. So we're going to see where that takes us. Which brings me to the next item, which is in front of you, you have a copy of a letter from a citizen that is, uh, quite disappointed in the fact that the opportunity for them to have a, a mailed copy of the newsletter, um, is, is no longer there. They don't have access to internet capabilities apparently and, and are quite displeased about that issue.
I was just going to say, have we communicated with this person, let them know that there are copies available at, I think? Here and? Is it library also? We didn't pick any copies there.
Can you print from the library?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, okay.
So for sure, we got copies here if that person knows that.
We can always get them copies, that's for sure. And we do put them downstairs on the administration counter, for sure. But I haven't responded yet, no.
Okay.
No, we just, the letter was just received.
Okay. One other suggestion, if they have no means of transportation or whatever, which possibly might be the case, and you communicate with this individual, we could mail them a copy. It'd be setting a precedence, but I don't think you're going to find that many people that maybe for whatever reason couldn't make it or wouldn't make it. But to make this person realize that we do care and we do like to give them the information, uh, for forty-nine cents, I'll chip in the postage stamp.
Done.
I'll be my personal forty-nine center.
And with that, Mr. President, um, oh, our dog is from Hart. I wanted to mention that, our puppy, we have a puppy from Hart, so I just wanted to mention that. Our puppy, we have a puppy from Hart, so I just wanted to mention that. End of report.
Police chief.
Thank you, I have nothing.
Can I add to his report? I did a ride-along.
The mayor calling you out, you're not going to respond?
I did a ride-along from eight o'clock to two-thirty Saturday evening, and it was in the unmarked. It was quite an experience. And I have to say, you've got a great staff, and everybody does a great job. And I think everybody should do it once. I just could not believe the excitement. I mean, I felt like I was in the middle of TV with cops. But it was great. But he mentioned there was thirty-two incidents just in his shift from four o'clock in the afternoon to two-thirty. And I know twenty of those happened while we were on, so...
Finance director.
I have nothing to add to my written report.
Okay. And I, I was going to respond to this email, or in reference to the newsletter. So Mark took care of that, and I have nothing else. Does anybody have any other committee reports?
I would like just, and I, you know, I was mentioning in personal finance committee, a little bit about Garfield and why I felt the way I was. And I'm just going to read a letter that went out on, you know, August fourteenth, which was a month ago, where we're at. And then today, when I went out there, there was nobody on the site, the contractor, and he wasn't there Friday after, you know, and he's been missing a lot of Fridays. But I personally would like to see this project get moved along, and I'm concerned about the ninety-five percent payment and everything else. But this is where the project was supposed to be at, the Garfield project. This is, is to have the road open for school on September second. All underground work on the street is completed and grading of the sub, and this was on August fourteenth. Subgrade would be completed by Saturday, August sixteenth, curb and gutter. And retaining wall will be installed the week of, the eighteenth. Aggregate base and paving, seating will take place the week of the twenty-fifth. Garfield sidewalk project will begin this week. All work around the school will be completed by September second in time for the school opening. Work on the sidewalks extending out from the school will begin next week with works scheduled to be completed by the end of September. None of that is done a month later. I don't mind that it's not done. What bothered me was that nobody there working today. And I did call Patrick, and I did call Jesse, and also I called him on Friday. And he did call the contractor on Friday, and the contractor said, "Well, we'll be there Monday paving." And there was nothing there. And I'm, I go by it. It's my district, getting a lot of pressure, it's a big project. You know, we've got a lot of grief on the sidewalk project that's going in that area. And I do want everybody, you know, at least, I'm hoping that we can get some more attention on the project, get it done. Because it's a big project. It reflects on all of us, so...
Any other committee reports? Okay. Committee resignations, we have two to accept with regret. Chris Hastings and Terry Johnson, both from the EDA. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, now we're going to adjourn to a closed session.
Can we have a five-minute break?
Yes. We're going to adjourn to a closed session to discuss IAFF union grievance settlement, and also to the Willow Street Lane...